Great, so I'm gonna call this planning board hearing. Meeting for April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four to order. And the first item is public participation.
Great, I'll just wait for the slides to come up. So thank you to everybody from the public who has. Joined us here tonight for this planning board meeting, really appreciate your participation. I believe many of you are here for the public hearing. But we want you to know that the city is engaged with community members to create a vision for productive, meaningful. And inclusive civic conversations. And this vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members. Staff and board commission members as well as. Democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences and political perspectives. And we have more information about this vision. And the process to develop the vision on our website. Next slide, please. And these are some of the examples of rules of decorum that are found in the Boulder Revised Code. And other guidelines that guide and support this vision. And these will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimonies shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Absurdity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior. That disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. And participants are required to identify themselves using. First and last name before we may call on you to speak online. Next slide. So my name is Vivian, sorry, I should have introduced myself at the beginning, Vivian Castro Wildridge, and my role in this meetings is to facilitate the. Public participation, so we'll ask you to. Raise your hand at the right time, the first part of the public participation will be open comment. And later in the meeting, we'll have public hearings. But when we call for public participation, you can raise your hand, your virtual hand, it will note a call on you. And you can see how to do that on the screen. And on the next slide, please. You can also go to reactions and then choose the raise hand. Function there and we'll know to call on you. So this first open comment part of the meeting is. An opportunity to speak to planning board. Members about any item not on the agenda, so the public hearing items will be. Later on after the presentations, but if you would like to speak. Now, please raise your hand. And I will call on you. Okay, we have one hand, Lynn Siegel, please go ahead, you have three minutes.
I think it's a tribute to the character of this board that there was only one person here speaking every single time this happens. For open comment, every single meeting. That's your fault. Why don't you have a pile of people here because I hear complaints all over this community? Things I'm gonna bring up tonight are Peacock Place. And the jobs housing imbalance. And LI tech funds which are the enemy. Low income housing tax credits are a federal. Subsidy. For population growth which do not benefit communities. The high proportion of now Boulder progressives on this board. Is not progressive at all, it's very digressive. Because growth does not pay its way. And the very people that. Seem to support low income housing. And the middle income housing which is like at twenty-two oh six Pearl. Seventeen hundred to twenty-six hundred dollars a month, and that was a year ago. Without a car space. This is not progressive. This is reductive reasoning. And it's not helpful for. For the. Affordable housing in this community promoting promoting the airport. Promoting every growth. Everywhere all over town that you can see is gonna do nothing but increase the wealth inequity in this community. Put more and more homeless people on the street and I don't wanna pay for it. I don't wanna pay for your subsidies to developers. Six million probably a year cleaning up trash. E. coli in the creek. From all of this development. That is not beneficial. It's upper class development because that's what always happens in a community particularly like Boulder. That has high AMI. And the AMI is not indexed to growth. So. I'm requesting. That you do something about Peacock Place. It was heavily objected to. This further growth on a flood nearer flood plain of Hogan Pancas that will disrupt. The alluvium in that area and flood people. South of there. And no one was given good. Ahead of information, I speak up, but I speak up at everything, so I don't count when Erin says, oh, but Lynn Siegel was there. That's not.
Thank you, Lynn, your three minutes are up and thank you for being here. No other hands are raised back to you, Chair.
Thank you, thanks Lynn for your comments. The next thing we're gonna talk about is that we don't have any meeting minutes this week. We do have, before I get into things, we do have a a monster agenda tonight. As we have two separate public hearings of concept plan reviews. We budgeted two hours for each of those. Before we get into those, we're. Let me just cover the three call up items that are that are on the docket, I don't believe there's any presentation for that. There's an opportunity to ask questions from the board. But I would ask that everyone. Just pay attention to time given, given that we've got two public hearing items. That are both gonna be take considerable and out of our time this evening. So with that said. Charles, I'm not sure what the process is for these call up items, is it just a Q and A? If the board has any questions about either of the call ups, we can take them one by one and we have staff on hand to respond to any questions and. If there's a desire to call them up, then the board can vote on that. Does anyone have any comments or items that they'd like to talk about under this section? And actually, I apologize, the board doesn't need to vote, I think it only takes one board member to to call it up. Apologies. Go ahead, Emel.
Thank you, George, I have a question on call up A. Um. And I I'm guessing. Charles, is that is it you who would be anyway? It talks about a. Public input, a good neighbor meeting. And that there were zero comments coming in from the outreach on that, so I'm curious. I'm guessing that the residences that are on the second and third floor of the adjacent building are rentals. And it said that the announcements only go to owners. So is this correct, the people that actually live here and that would be impacted didn't wouldn't have gotten an information?
It's standard that our public notices go out to property owners. And then it would be typically their decision how that is shared. So it's my understanding that it does not go to individual units and tenants.
The property was also posted with a posting sign.
Oh. Yeah, that would be my next question is how would people that you know actually are there know? Um. Perfect, let me see.
And ML, it also has a QR code, so it'll take you right to the. The project, you can get the public notice and all the information right off of the sign.
Perfect, twenty-first century communication. And my second question on that, um, under the management plan, it talks about the music. And the sound, ten small speakers. Um. And it says that it's intended. To be background music, so should there be any? People impacted or complaining about that, how would anybody? Actually follow up on that, it's not a decibel that's established. So how does that? How is that managed when it just says it's intended to be background music? And that sort of meeting the fact that it's not gonna impact people?
Yeah, it's a great question. So the city has a noise ordinance that specifies decibel levels different times of day and night. Their management plan also addresses outdoor music, if I'm not mistaken, but Alison can speak to that. And if neighbors felt like the music was too loud or they weren't abiding by the management plan, then they could file a code enforcement action and then. We can follow up on that.
Right, yeah, I don't think they're, they didn't say they were gonna have outdoor music, but I was just curious about that. Statement, you know, background music, but thank you, Charles, for reminding that the city. The city does have. Sort of the. The maximum allowable, thank you for that, and those were my two questions, and I will not be calling it up, thank you.
Any other questions on these three items? Mason?
Yeah, on item A. It's just for my information, has this already gone to the liquor board or will it need to go to the liquor board?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head, I do believe they would need to. They may need to apply for a new zoning verification, but I I actually have the applicant. On the call, if you wanna ask them about the their liquor license, it's not information we typically review for the use review.
Do they need to unmute? Who's the applicant, Allison, so I can add them?
It's Ashley.
I just promoted her to panelist, so she should be joining in a second.
Thanks.
We can move on to other questions for waiting.
That might be the number one.
Hi, everyone, sorry about that, I had to unmute. Yeah, I'm Ashley, one of the owners of the the lab barn bites, which is in. Option A there. We do already have our liquor license, so this review is actually just to extend our hours. From our understanding of the new ordinance that was passed, there is not anything that has to be done with the liquor board. But of course, if Alison and I can talk about that more, if there is, then. Of course, we would go to the liquor board if necessary, but. From what our understanding is, is that the hours of operation were a zoning. Requirement, and since the new ordinance was passed through zoning. This user view is just to extend the hour, so the liquor license has already been obtained. For over a year now, so.
Great, that sounds like a no, appreciate it.
Yep, of course.
Hi, I apologize, I was having connection problems, so I missed a part of this, and if this has already been asked, I'm sorry about that. It says that other businesses in the area are open past eleven AM, eleven PM, are any open as late as one AM?
Yes, so there's multiple. Well. One establishment just got their license revoked, so I wanna make sure that that's clear, but there were. Essentially licenses that were grandfathered in under the old and previous liquor license app operating hours. That were permitted to stay open even when the new ordinance was. Approved to change the hours to end at eleven PM. So there are already establishments on the hill that do stay open past eleven PM, any new licenses after that? New ordinance, which I believe was passed in two thousand thirteen, saying that any. Applications after two thousand thirteen could only see open past eleven PM or until eleven PM if you hold a liquor license. The new ordinance that was just passed in December of this year has repealed that previous two thousand thirteen. Ordinance, and so that is why we're at this time seeking the extra hours.
Right, my question though was specifically about until one AM. Are there any businesses that are open until one AM?
I believe so, yes, I I do not know every operating hours for all the businesses. Adjacent to us, but I do know that the. Location right next to us is was open till two AM. There is a tattoo shop, I know it's not the same thing, they're open until I believe three AM, so there is. There are definitely businesses open past one AM.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Does anyone wish to call any of these up? Alright, I think we can move forward. And so with that, we'll move forward to our public hearing items, thanks for everyone who attended the call up items. Vivian, could you kick us off for our public hearing? Number one.
George, I think you need to read the title of the the item. As the chair.
Sure. So, uh, we are gonna commence our public hearing for the first. Public hearing item on tonight's agenda, it is the concept plan review and comment for the development of a vacant parcel at the northwest corner of Spine Road and Gun Barrel Ave. Addressed as forty-six hundred highway one nineteen in city mapping. The proposal includes development of seventy-nine, two and three bedroom townhouses. With ten buildings and a central courtyard reviewed under case number L U R two thousand twenty-four zero 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 one three.
Alright, thanks for the intro, just confirming everyone can see and hear me. Right, great, thanks. Good evening, planning board and members of the public, the item before you tonight is a concept plan for new development at the corner of Spine Road and Gun Barrel Ave. Address at forty-six hundred highway one nineteen. In this presentation, I'll briefly cover the information provided in staff's memo, including the purpose and process of concept plan. The project proposal and background and some key issues for discussion. The purpose of concept plan is to review a general development plan for a specific site. And help identify key issues in advance of any site review submittal, so the applicant will receive comments from board, staff and the public. Just as a reminder, there will be no formal action taken tonight on the project. The applicant completed the necessary public notice requirements per the code. Written notice was sent to property owners within six hundred feet and signs are placed on the property as well. Staff did receive comments from several neighbors, those were included in the staff memo and also transmitted directly to planning board in the email. The subject site is located in Gun Barrel, the northwest corner of Spine Road and Gun Barrel Ave. Adjacent to diagonal highway or highway one nineteen and the BNSF railroad. And it's just north of the celestial seasonings properties and west of the Medtronic campus. The majority of the site is zoned industrial. Menu, sorry, skip the note. The majority of the site is designated as light industrial and that includes uses such as research and development. Light manufacturing and complimentary residential uses where appropriate. The western portion of the site is designated as open space development rights. And is precluded from development by the existing conservation easement, which I'll touch on shortly. The site is owned industrial manufacturing and surrounded by other IM zones. Intensity standards for the zone are based on a combination of the following, an FAR limitation of one point O for residential uses. The provision of a minimum of fifteen percent of usable open space for the site due to the proposed height. And the application of heightened setback standards. Per table seven, one of the land use code, industrial buildings are limited to three stories and a maximum height of forty feet by right in the IM zone. The site is near a variety of industrial and commercial uses to the east, specifically the COVIDian slash Medtronic campus. And then the celestial seasonings property and development to the south. On the other side of Spine Road to the southeast of the site is mixed sensey residential. Within the county as well as a future residential development just south of the site. On the other side of the highway is city owned open space and the six mile reservoir and then. About a mile northeast of the site is the gun ground shopping center and other industrial and commercial uses as well. The site is currently undeveloped and those structures would be demolished as part of the redevelopment. The lot contains limited vegetation with some mature trees along the rights away. There is an active prairie dog colony as well located onsite. The subject site, also known as lot one of the Urbaria subdivision, was established as part of the celestial seasonings Pewty in nineteen eighty-two. In two thousand ten, a site review amendment was granted to add. Lot one to the Valley Lab and slash COVIDian Pewty at the time. One of the conditions of of that approval was to allow for the transfer of fifty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-eight square feet of floor area from. Lot one to lot ten A of that COVIDian Pewty to allow for the development of a parking garage. That condition also imposed a maximum density of forty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-two square feet on that lot one. As I previously mentioned, the site is encumbered by one hundred and fifty foot wide conservation easement. That was granted to the city in nineteen eighty-two as part of the original Pewty. The conservation easement is currently held by the city and stewarded by the open space and Mount Parks Division. And is meant to preserve the scenic and open condition of the area. As such, development within the easement will be limited. The easement prohibits the destruction of active prairie dog burrows, certain fencing and structures, irrigation systems, tree removal and access by motorized vehicles. City mapping does also indicate a fifteen foot wide public pedestrian and bicycle trail easement. It starts at the northern corner of the subject site and then terminates the southeast corner of the celestial seasonings development. That pedestrian and bike trail easement was originally dedicated as part of the Urbaria subdivision and intended to serve. Between the lots in that celestial seasonings Pewty, so the path is not part of the T M P transportation masterment, it does not connect to a network outside of the boundaries of the site. The applicant is proposing to develop the existing vacant site with ten new buildings containing seventy-nine, two and three bedroom townhouses. Vehicle access to the site is from Spine Road and Gun Barrel Ave. And the site will provide parking, private parking garages, parking off of the internal alleys and on-street parking. Along Spine Road and Gun Barrel Ave. Open space on the site is provided in the form of a central common area as well as private individual balconies. Just as a note, the development can count that area within the easement towards the total allowable site open space. But it will be subject to the conditions of the conservation easement. The architecture of the project is contemporary and building materials include great brick, wood composite panels and stucco. Some of the proposed materials appear to meet the site review criteria for durable and long lasting materials, but that will be further evaluated at that time of site review. And the site is oriented so that buildings front either the public realm or the courtyard in the center. And buildings along the the units along the western boundary are oriented to face the conservation easement with access to the use of the flat irons. The proposal is largely three story flat roof buildings, the project appears to meet FAR requirements per the zone and proposes one hundred and seventy-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-eight square feet. Which comes out to about point five FAR, however, detailed floor plans will be submitted in future applications for staff to verify the floor area calculations. Note that at time of site review, the applicant will need to demonstrate compliance with the FAR requirements for the rest of the Pewty and and request an amendment to that previous condition limiting. Floor area on lot one. Staff has identified three key issues for discussion tonight, and I will go through those in the following slides. Is the proposal generally compatible with the goals, objectives and recommendations of the BBCP? Staff finds that overall the proposed use and design for the site aligns with BBC policies. Specifically introducing housing units in fill housing and on developed properties and protection of open space through the existing easement. And it also is consistent with the LI designation for the area. Our second key issue is, does planning board have feedback for the applicant on the conceptual site plan and building design? Staff's initial assessment of the proposed site and building design is included under the concept review criteria. Overall, staff appreciates the inclusion of improved alleys in the proposed site design. Although more information will need to be provided as it relates to the pedestrian experience and traffic holding with those alleys. Overall, there are some concerns about meeting the some some of the site review criteria specifically related to materials, building length and balconies, to name of you. And for the last key issue, just other key issues that identified by the board that they would like to bring up. As far as next steps, following this concept review hearing, city council may vote to call up the item. For a council hearing to provide additional feedback. The applicant will then either proceed with submit submitting development review applications or submit a second concept review application. Site review amendment will be required, in which case staff will review the proposed modification to the existing Pewty as well as potential modifications to the code, including access and setbacks. And the rest of the site review criteria. As proposed, the application would not trigger an automatic public hearing and would therefore be subject to call up by planning board. And I will open it up to questions.
Alright, questions for Alison and staff? Thanks, Alison, for a great presentation, Emel.
Thank you, George. Thanks, Alison, that was very. Well and concisely presented, I appreciate that, I just have a couple of. So one of the things that has come up. In many of the people putting comments on this is. The lack of a sub community plan to guide. And I'm wondering if we have any. Input from P and D about, is that on anybody's agenda, will we be? Is that coming someday or should people in that neighborhood in that area and Gun Barrel in general? What should they be thinking regards to that?
As far as the sub community plan, it's it's my understanding that it has not been identified as part of the work plan for. The long range planners, they're looking right now at BBCP updates and some of these older sub community plan. But as of now, it's it's not part of the work plan.
Yeah, there was a sub community plan for Gun Barrel adopted in or in two thousand four, I think it was amended in two thousand six, but I don't think that there's any. Anything on the work program right now that would either expand the area of the plan. Or kind of freshen it up at this point, I think all the focus right now was on the upcoming comp plan update.
Right. Yeah, it just it seems like most people were just referring to that and I wanted to go public with. We recognize that it's it's a. You know, it's a concern and I and I think the plan you're talking about, Charles, is the one for the central business district, I think.
That's right, this property wouldn't actually fall into the area of influence of the existing Gun Barrel sub community plan from two thousand six.
Right. And the other question I have, and I'm not sure you would be able to answer it, but. So they talk about the. Transportation options and that there's a proposed bus stop. But we can't guarantee, isn't that RTD or can we guarantee that there'd be a bus stop or what is? When there isn't a bus stop in the vicinity and and part of the multimodal transportation. I guess proposal thinking is that there's a proposed bus stop, how how does that? How does that work when we don't know that we'll we'll get it?
I don't think we can require a bus stop, I think if there's an existing bus stop, we can require improvements to the bus stop, but. You know, staff has been working and chatting with RTD about the existing bus routes and that will be. Explored further in a future TDM and once they submit for site review.
Right, so can the applicant include it as part of their? TDM thinking if it's not guaranteed?
I think that that depends on what RTD comes back with as far as the planned service for those stops.
Yeah, I think the I think the answer would be no unless we have a guarantee from RTD that it's either gonna be upgraded or there'll be new service that's included as you know, part of the site review. This just being concept, we're just identifying key issues at this point and. If and when they submit an actual site review application, we would get a little bit more serious in our discussions with RTD.
Perfect, that's what I was looking for. Whether we would like it versus we have it is allowed, those are my questions, thank you so much.
Thanks, Emel, Kurt.
Sorry, I'm dealing with my iPad, uh, let's see. The first question is about the floor area, so my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is. under the P U D with the transfer of floor area, forty-one thousand roughly square feet are allowed, and they're proposing a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Is that correct?
That is correct. And so part of the site review application, it would be technically a site review amendment to amend the, the Pewee and the previous condition that, that limited, limited that F A R. The applicant would provide an, an F A R analysis of the lot and how it meets the Zone District F A R, as well as F A R for the entire Pewee.
Okay. And are there standards, the, the, the standards that would apply are the usual site review standards?
Correct.
There's nothing specific for that sort of.
No, it's our regular site review criteria. It's just full of site review.
Okay, uh, sounded, sounds good. Next question. Uh, so I saw one place a reference to a height modification, but it also sounds like they're building to the, the forty-foot height limit. Is that correct?
It's my understanding it's building to the, the forty-foot height limit. I think the applicant has a presentation will be able to also touch on that.
Yeah, okay. And then the memo says that the path in the conservation easement was not intended to connect to a broader transit network. Do you have evidence for that? What, what is that based on?
It, it's not, it's just from our analysis of the transcript, the T M P. It's, it's not shown on the T M P. It doesn't connect to any other routes. And I'd have to go back and look at the language of the dedication. But I believe the intent was to serve the existing beauties in, in that way.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, next question is, is my recollection is the project to the south that is not yet under construction was to help pay for a shuttle accessing sort of downtown Gun Barrel. Um, is that right?
Um, I'm not familiar with that. That project was before my time. I don't know Charles maybe has some historical information on that, or I can look into it also.
Kurt, can you repeat the question for me, please?
Yeah, my recollection is when the, the project to the south on Spine was approved, the part of the T D M plan for that project was to help fund a shuttle to downtown Gun Barrel and to the, the future B R T stop along Highway one nineteen. So I'm wondering, since, since that project has not been constructed, if you have any information about the status of that shuttle? Is it still in, being planned? Any information about that?
I'd have to go back and look at that approval, which we can do while we're talking here. If it was included in the, in the approval, then they would be required to, you know, make sure that they're providing the shuttle and running it. We just need to go back on the approval history. I don't recall off the top of my head.
Okay, basically, the question would be then, if that is still happening, could this project? Sorry. Um, could this project be required to also help pay for that?
Okay, that's a good question for Hella, I think, but it looks like she's struggling with internet.
Okay, yeah, aren't we all? And then, uh, let's see, one, one more question.
I'm turning off my, my video, maybe that.
We can hear you now, Hella.
Okay, I hope you can continue to hear me.
Yeah.
I remember that there was a question of approval on the Spine.
I don't remember what you're saying. Maybe you could, Hella, maybe, maybe it'd be possible to.
Then required contribution that I think was.
Sorry, we're not hearing you.
Yeah, would it be possible maybe for Hella to put a response in the chat or something?
Yeah. We can work behind scenes, Kurt, to have responded to that.
Okay, thank you. And then, George, is it, I have two more questions.
Yeah, go for it. Go, go for it. Go for it.
Go for it, okay. Uh, the, the, the proposal talks about vacation of an easement for an underpass under the diagonal. Can you talk more about that?
Yeah, that, the original, there was originally, I think it's like a thirty-foot wide reservation that was dedicated. Part of the language of that dedication said that after a certain amount of years, the reservation essentially goes away. And that time has passed. I can try to find the exact date. But since the overpass has not been developed, that reservation is essentially dissolved.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, okay, sounds good. Uh, then, um, oh, my last question, finally, my last question is the, the memo talks about a drainage easement on Spine, and I'm wondering what restrictions that imposes. I think it's a twenty-five-foot drainage easement.
Yeah, I'm just trying to pull up the mapping so I can familiarize myself with that. Yeah, usually our, our engineers would look at that during site review to confirm uh, what development is allowed, but I'll take a note of that and try to get you an answer.
Okay, yeah.
While we're waiting.
Okay. Yeah, any, any implications in terms of what can be put in the easement and what impact it has on the layout would be helpful. Okay, I am finally done. Thank you.
All right, Mark.
Hi, I'm gonna follow, this is kind of good timing. I'm gonna follow up a little bit on a couple of Kurt's questions. The first one is the, the project which we assume will be going forward to the southwest. I can't tell from the plans from this project, do any of the, is, is there any, going to be any connection or streets that align? So there's a natural connection to the southwest from this property to the property, uh, to the southwest when it's developed?
Um, I'm, I'm not aware of any proposed connection to the, the southern property. I, I think the applicant can also specify their future plans for connection.
Okay. Uh, the next one is kind of following along with the Kurt's question about the underpass. The proposed and I think, uh, future Boulder bikeway between Boulder and Longmont will, as far as I understand, I, if anyone on staff has additional information or counter information, I'd love to know it. That bikeway, for the most part, will take place in the median between the north and southbound lanes of the diagonal. And so without an underpass, is it everyone's understanding that, in fact, there would really be no access to that other than at J Road? And that sixty-fifth or whatever, whatever it is, went at the next stoplight, you know, you have a stoplight at J. And then the next one to the north is whatever numbered street that is. So, and my question, I'll go back to the question. Does anyone on staff have any confirming data that the bikeway will be in the median between the lanes?
Um, I, I don't have that information off the top of my head where the, the bikeway will be, if it's between the medians, but I can also look that up for you.
Okay, all right. And again, that, that's a project that's in uh, in design, in flux, you know, is, I think the county is really the lead on that, but, but both the city of Boulder, city of Longmont are participants in that, but, okay. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Go ahead, Claudia.
Thank you. A couple of questions here. My first one is about the conservation easement and the existing conditions there. It's mentioned in the packet and also quite visible on the site that there is a berm in that area that is running parallel to the diagonal. And I'm curious if we know is that, is the berm a natural feature? Is it a human-constructed feature? And in the course of, you know, doing construction on this site, what are the limitations on dealing with topography and other things in the conservation easement? Because I do see this part of the plan that, that shows some landscaping improvements in that area.
Um, yeah, that, that is a good question. It, it's, you know, I think the the conservation easement will require additional analysis as it comes through for site review and what can and cannot occur inside of it. It's my understanding that the development within it is pretty limited. And so excavation and changes to the berm would probably be pretty limited. You know, that said, the conservation easement does allow for certain things like a pond and a jogging path. So I think if, you know, those features were to go in, then we might be able to look at it from that lens and whether or not the berm would preclude some of those allowed developments.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the second question is about internal circulation in these alleyways that I'm seeing on the plan. And what requirements does the city have for internal circulation for cars on a site of this size with this many units?
Um, it would be subject to, um, you know, one of the, the concerns that we had is providing more information on some of those traffic calming measures due to the, the, the design. So we would look at that as well as the site review criteria for access and circulation. And then I believe that some of the D C S standards were also applied.
Okay, so specific question that I'm, I'm seeing this kind of triangular wedge of housing in the open space area in the center of this plan. And does that need to have, I mean, essentially, does, do the alleyways need to connect around a future like that?
Whether or not they need to connect around the, the courtyard? If, if that's like a, a city requirement or I, I don't, I don't think that is. I think it, it probably more has to do with the site design from the applicant and how they were laying out the buildings.
Okay, fabulous. Thank you. I'm, I'm getting to know some of the details of the code in this, in this way. Appreciate that. And then my third question does overlap a bit with questions that I think Kurt and Mark have already raised. And that is about a future transportation demand management plan. And in particular, is there, is there any guidance on having plans that essentially will intersect with each other in some way? So we have two sites here adjacent to each other where parking and traffic is likely to be an issue. And the question is, is there any way of bringing T D Ms into conversation with each other?
I think there probably is. We're still waiting for Hella to reconnect. I think she's gonna try to reconnect on her phone. But in the meantime, I was able to find that condition of approval from the four, seven, seven, five Spine Project to the South, so good memories here tonight. So the applicant was required to contribute two hundred thousand dollars to fund a first year of a Gun Barrel Shuttle, provided the shuttle is established no later than three years after issuance of the last certificate of occupancy for the development. I think the original standard was eighteen months, and I think the board bumped it up to three years, so. I don't know that, it's a very active site right now as far as permitting goes. I think they've made it through the technical document review process, but I don't believe that they've entered building permit at this point.
Okay, thank you. No more questions right now.
Great. Mason?
Great, thank you. Yeah, awesome presentation. Tacking on to some of the questions about the conservation easement. And the, I wanted to bring up some notes that are read from Public Comet, and that was around the cottonwood tree that's there and the dog park that might be built. And I, I believe that you already kind of touched on this in your answer, Allison, that these things will reviewed further as what's allowed in the conservation easement. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I think our, our initial take, that initial read of the conservation easement is that some of like the fencing in the dog park would not be allowed, but that will be reviewed more closely at site review.
And as far as the extensive prairie dog colonies around this property, the packet did speak in length about relocation and other options that would need to be taken into account. What I wasn't really sure of is I know that Open Space Mountain Parks does studies as to populations in certain areas of open space of prairie dogs and whether or not they were meeting their targets for this area. Do we have any knowledge on that? They're above or below?
I, I don't have that information on the prairie dog relocation as far as any sort of metrics for the area. I can try to pin that down.
Thanks.
Mason, that's something that we would probably get more into at the site review phase at concept plan. We're really just kind of raising it as an issue. It's absolutely something that once they get into prairie dog permitting, that we would absolutely follow up on as part of the site review.
Okay, that sounds great. I'll look forward to hearing more about it then. So I know in some areas they're above target and they're relocating, and some areas are below targets. I'd be interested in knowing specifically about this area. As far as the railroad, are there, I, I looked up and down. I didn't see any housing developments this close, if I'm reading the plans right. Are there any additional regulations that we need to consider when building a site of houses this close to railroads?
Uh, we do have a site review criterion that discusses, I'm just trying to pull it up, the actual number that talks about proximity to railroads and sort of the materials in the design that would need to be incorporated. I think trials, trials are muted.
Sorry, I think there's also some noise attenuation, construction typology to ensure that it's not completely disruptive.
Yeah, that's under the building materials, nine, two, fourteen, H, three, C, five.
Yeah, I can see that. I just didn't know if there are any, does that get to, I didn't see any rules or regulations specifically around railroads? Is that, is that required, those, the noise abatements?
Um, I think other than the, the building permit and site review criteria, there aren't, but.
Great. And my last question has to do with the comment that I saw. And that was that there was a concern that this land was supposed to be a park. But it was in the past, that P U D that turned it into Lot One, and I did look at that, and it looked like it was a, it was labeled as suggested future use. I was, I just wanted to confirm that that wasn't part of a, a promise for this land or something.
Yeah, it was included as like in a future master plan, but it did not propose, the set review amendment did not specifically propose a park, and it was not included in the approval or stated in the condition, the specific condition on that lot. I think it was just kind of a, a future plan that could happen, and it's a five to seven years, which have now, now passed, but, so it was not a, a proposed or approved as part of that site review amendment.
Great, thanks. That was my read too. I just wanted to make sure we covered. That's all my questions.
Great, thanks, Mason. M L, did, did I, did I really have you once?
Did I? I can go whenever.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll just, I want to circle to Laura and then myself, and then I'll come back for a second round of comments. Go ahead, Laura.
Thank you. Somebody saying?
Sorry, I'm interrupting. This is, this is Hella. I just wanted to check if my phone is working. And before we move on, I wanted to mention that we do actually have a new site review criterion that imposes some noise reduction requirements for residential units within two hundred feet of a railroad. So this is probably within two hundred feet, and this, this would then apply in this, in this case.
Do you have any specificity of those what those noise reduction requirements are?
Yeah, it says it has to be designed to achieve an interior day night average noise level of no more than 45 decibels. And then it has to be measured consistent with standards for the federal housing and urban development standards under federal law.
Thanks, Hella. Just unearthed that. And to loop back to Mark's question, it does look like the nine miles of the Lobo Trail between Longmont and Boulder that needs to be completed. It looks like there will be a big stretch of that that'll exist in the median between 119. Laura.
I just have one question. Allison, did I hear right in your presentation that you said that if this project is constructed as currently proposed, that it would not come back to us for an automatic hearing, but it would be a planning board call up item?
Yeah, as proposed, since there's no height modification, I guess the other option if they are requesting vested rights, that's an automatic public hearing. But with what they've shown so far, it does not indicate it would trigger automatic public hearing. So yeah, it would be subject to planning board call.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Thanks, Laura. I I just have one question before we go another round, if anyone has any additional follow ups before we get to the applicant. I I wanted to circle back to something that Kurt was mentioning. It was in the memo around the 41,000 square feet, the deal that was made around with this PUD. I I'd like a little bit more clarity as it relates to. So is everything above 41,000 square feet then a an exception to that PUD?
I I think it would be the amendment would either change that condition or strike it entirely so that they would not be limited to the 41,000. I don't know. It looks like Hella unmuted. I don't know if she has more to add to that.
Yeah, what was approved under that PUD was what was allowed to be constructed based on that approval, but you can come in and seek a different approval. And at that time when that was approved, the man use code standards were different as well. The residential and IM and IG zones opportunity was not created at that point in time. I think that was created in the in 2004. So so that was not even something that could have been considered at the time. So the concept's changed a little bit. And with a new application, changes can made to the PUD consistently with today's laws.
Okay, but it's up to it's up to us as a city to approve an amendment that would supersede what is actually possible under the PUD. Is that correct?
Yes, but your decision would have to be based on whether or not what's proposed meets the code standards.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's that's helpful. Anyone for a second round of clarification questions between staff? I'd like to keep it kind of brief just because we got a lot of stuff to go through. So if people can distill their stuff pretty quickly, if you're ready, go ahead and talk. I think ML was up first.
Yes, thank you, George. I'm ready. So I'm looking at criteria three under concept plan review and just talk about the site review information. So Allison, one of the site review, I think it's H1F, talks about housing types. And so this project has got townhouses. It's got townhouses and what they were calling wide townhouses. Are those two things considered different types?
No, the the different housing types would be duplexes, attached dwelling units, townhouses, live work units and efficiency living units. We don't differentiate between different types of townhouses.
Okay, so for the greater than five acres, they must have two qualifies flying qualifying housing types. And right now they only have townhouses.
Correct. Yeah, and and they would also need to provide at least five dwelling units of each of the two qualifying housing types.
Okay. And then my last question concerning the and by again, it's a site review criteria, but it comes up in other places that we've been hearing. Section G, environmental preservation, talks about mitigating as adverse impacts to a species of special concern. So the county has identified the black tailed prairie dog as a species of concern. So would that imply that they really can't do much of anything to that conservation easement? To preserve the colony?
I you know, I think again, that's something we definitely look at more closely at site review since this is still at the concept phase. I think, you know, the the conditions of the conservation easement will also play into it. And certainly, you know, this criteria will be evaluated when we review that conservation easement and the protection of natural features and species.
So in the open space requirement, so this kind of plays into the open space requirement that we see if they're greater than 50 units and more than one mile from a public park, then they have to create recreational opportunities on site. And if that conservation easement has to retain the prairie dogs, you can't, they're kind of like in conflict with each other. So my question is, does this project it's greater than 50 units and it's more than one mile, so it would need to meet the those extra requirements of open space that comes in under the site review? Is that correct?
Yeah, excuse me, that is correct. And, you know, they could provide that 30% elsewhere on the site. They could also, the easement does allow for, I believe it's called a jogging path. So there are ways that they could meet those active recreational purposes within the conservation easement or elsewhere on site.
Great, thank you so much. Those are my questions.
Thanks, ML. Kurt, I saw your hand up briefly. Are you?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? I have one more question. I had a question on the for staff regarding the length of some of these buildings. So I counted on the plan. There's some pretty long buildings here with two with, I think, 12 townhouses and 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 one with or one with 13 or two with 13. Either way, some some pretty long build. What what are the are there standards? We're seeing a lot of these townhouse developments. Are there standards that that are in place to break some of these 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 large masses up?
Yeah, and I think that that was one of the concerns that we had highlighted was, you know, the building length for especially those buildings that you called out that have 12 or 13 units. We do have that in the site review criteria and we have further condition or further criteria for height modification. Again, if they're not applying for a height modification, those wouldn't apply, but we do have site review criteria that looks at building.
So is what is what proposed here that we're looking at in violation of the site review criteria as it stands?
It's hard to say because we didn't review closely against the site review criteria since it's in the concept plan. I think that's why we raised it since it's a concept that it may be an issue and should be considered in the further design as they kind of fine tune the.
Let me ask with more specificity. Does the site review criteria have a building length maximum that?
It doesn't have a maximum, but it's a certain length. It needs to be broken up or have the appearance of different buildings. Actually, the additional criteria for height mods might have a max length.
I thought it was maximum length somewhere.
Yeah, I think it might just be for the if you're requesting a height modification, there are additional criteria that limit. I think it's like, hold on, let me see if I can find it.
Well, maybe we can put a pin in that. I don't need an answer right now, but when we get to discussion, I'd like to talk about it more, but I don't don't need to hold this up. Any other questions for staff before we go to the applicant's time? All right. Thank you. Thanks, Allison.
Thank you.
We'll see applicant. I believe they have 15 minutes, up to 15 minutes for their presentation.
Good evening, board members. Adrian Soffer, Soffer Sparn Architects. I'd like to be able to share our screen if I can. And John Grant, can you see the screen?
I can.
Okay, hang on a second. Okay, I assume at this point you can see my screen.
Yes, just real quickly. My name's John Grant. I'm with Crescent Real Estate. Thank you for having us here tonight. Crescent is a real estate firm co-headquartered in Denver with an office in Boulder. We have owned and developed properties in Boulder since 2011. And we've participated in the East Boulder Working Group and the Airport Group. Crescent employs six individuals in the Boulder office and utilizes local service providers such as Soffer Sparn and Dean Callen. I appreciate everyone's time this evening as we discuss our proposed middle housing project on the Diagonal Highway. I will be glad to answer any questions at the end, but will now turn the presentation over to Adrian Soffer. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'd like to go through a little bit the process that we have gone through to develop this concept plan. You're all, I know, familiar with the site. The project site is directly adjacent to Diagonal Highway, which is, of course, got a major impact on the form of the project. The other obvious thing of 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 value to recognize is the distant mountain views available beyond Diagonal Highway. So of course, there's the sound and the and the and the impact of the highway itself on the property as well as the the train line. But beyond that, there's tremendous views of open space, the 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 reservoir and the and the and the bird sanctuary associated. So looking at how people in this in this area, which is zoned industrial manufacturing, have addressed that view, we we start adjacent to us on the on the southwest is a celestial seasoning site. And you can barely see it from the road, but what you do from the highway, but what you do see is essentially its loading dock and it has somewhat distant from the from the highway. But you can definitely see it's the back of the building. Next to us on the opposite side is the Medtronic facility, which actually doesn't front very much onto the highway itself. It fronts onto Spine Road, which is then adjacent to this particular parcel. And it takes the the perspective of that the long view of the of the mountains is something that is a a a great value to them. And so they have long ribbon windows that have that face that view. And actually, the 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 element that is directly adjacent to the highway is one of their parking structures. Next to that is one of many office buildings along this strip. This has a more of a sort of multifamily feel to it in terms of the way they've dealt with the massing and the openings. But it too has in front of it their their parking lot. And it treats it as an amenity for the views, but not so great in terms of how it's fronting on the on the highway itself. And then as you continue on, there's more parking lots and strip windows. So it it's all meant to be seen really as a something that you move by very quickly and not terribly engaged in 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 the highway, which is perfectly understandable because the highway is not terribly engaged with it. But it is it is definitely a different kind of criteria to deal with than what is found on the other side of the project, which is Spine Road itself. And in that regard, Spine Road leads into the residential areas that are mostly in the county, but also some parts in the city. As you move southward along Spine Road, there is, as I said earlier, the Medtronic building, again, not a very pedestrian friendly zone. As it moves a little bit further to the to the south, it's it gets even less engaged in that pedestrian environment and then finally scales down and then turns into Spine Road Residential Zone, which has existing flats of two and three stories. And across the street from that is what's recently been approved by you as our our neighboring new multifamily development. This is, I believe, almost all flats. So that's the context in which we designed or attempted to design this project. Looking at the project site, Diagonal Highway is to the to the to the the west northwest to the north Medtronic. And then the housing, pardon me, to the west, to the east Medtronics, and then housing south of that, that's either existing or planned for and approved by the city. The the access along Spine Road is a major truck delivery route into celestial seasonings, which turns in on Gun Barrel Avenue and turns again to Sleepy Time Drive. Also, we have we have, I believe, a requirement for a buffered bike lane to be included as well as a deceleration lane that leads into Gun Barrel to the south. And along Spine and Gun Barrel, we are proposing on-street parking that would then serve this property and its guests. The multi-use path is a part of the connections plan. It's unclear as to whether it's required or not. I'm I'm a little bit unsure myself, but there it is. We we will we'll talk about that, I'm sure, as we go on. The the underpass reservation is actually half on this property and half on the property to the south. It's not reserved particularly for bikes. This is a major underpass that I think was anticipated and is now not intended. I believe that that allowance has expired, but we would request that if it has expired to that it be vacated completely. So it doesn't interfere with us moving forward when we go looking for building permits. Beyond that, looking at how we enter the site, we 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 are only providing or showing one access to the public right of way along Spine Road. We've moved it as far north as we could to not interfere with the deceleration lane and allow as much parking closer to the residence as possible. And we're also showing that it linked to the neighborhood to the south that is both approved and potentially a future neighborhood on the adjacent property to the southwest. We have no idea what will go there or when it will go there or if it will go there. But we feel it's important to not disconnect neighborhoods. Staff has has commented on only one access is allowed. We are showing only one access from public right of way. But we believe it's important to provide this access to the south. The the fire marshal has also weighed in on that and actually does want the second access point so that we can come back to through site review as well. We mentioned already the views to the to the mountains, to to the the northwest and west. And the impact of Diagonal Highway is very significant in terms of sound on this property. The conservation easement is the green and the berm that's that's there today. Or actually, I'm not sure. There's a detention pond, I believe, in the in 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 this area of the site that would that is really serving the celestial seasonings PUD and the and the and there is the easement is to serve, I believe, also the future development to the south. And we are maintaining that as a 25-foot easement. We are also showing actually that it has moved to the west to allow for the future deceleration lane and the and the 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 protected bike path. All of that will have to impact the site by by moving everything westward on it. We are also showing that we we're we're trying to take advantage of the potential for pedestrian access directly into the site from Spine and Gun Barrel Avenue and treating those as entries along the street to the townhouses. While the internal link serves as a access both to residences along the west. And we we feel it actually is an important secondary loop to to connect that internal link, which, by the way, the fire marshal is requiring us to do too. And we have to make this serviceable to his emergency vehicles. We started out looking at the possibility of doing stacked flats over tuck under parking. But Crescent felt very strongly that we needed to address the the middle middle, missing middle housing and particularly in relation to townhouse units. So as we've submitted it, everything on this site is shown that way. And then Carol Adams, our landscape architect, is here to address whatever questions you might have. But in the interest of time, I'll let it stand for now that we can address your comments as they arise. But basically, all of the housing is intended to meet the street along the public street and the private drives and provide an internal circulation loop that allows access to housing along the western side. So in this case, rather than put any parking in a street along the visible side of the highway, we're saying that the front doors and the garages are accessed from the internal drive. Whereas along the public access routes and the private drive at the south and the east, the parking is not visible. It's pedestrian-oriented only. A word about townhouse typology and the missing middle. That City Council and Planning Board is aware of the need. By their nature, we are talking about a long horizontal structure that is generally repetitive along its frontage. That's basically the nature of a townhouse. And there are limited opportunities for varieties along that frontage. And at the same time, they typically front onto a street and make for a very walkable neighborhood. And they can vary quite a bit in terms of how close the sidewalk is versus how much further away. And the character of that street, these are a little bit more urban in their nature than what we have here. What we're showing right now is there is the drain easement, which will be between the new sidewalk and the parking and the bike path. That drain easement is about, is 25 feet wide, excuse me, a little too quickly. And then crossing that with access directly into every townhouse unit. But in order to create that pedestrian-oriented street, the car has to go somewhere else. And otherwise, you end up with, which is very common in certain parts of town and in other jurisdictions, where the whole frontage is essentially given up to a garage door and a small accommodation for an entry. And to avoid that, we've taken the street-frontage side and made all of those into access into the townhouses on the front. But that means then we have put the car on the backside and treated that more as an access lane. Whereas on the side that is parallel to Diagonal Highway, we've widened those units and created, and we're still working on how that character of that street works and traffic calming, which I'm sure we'll get to as we move forward. The combination of both entry into the units as well as the garages. So that allows us to free up the backside towards the view and towards the visibility of this project from the highway. As we've mentioned before, by their nature, townhouses are long and horizontal in character, et cetera, and typically varied at the rear, the non-street-facing side. They oftentimes will be completely varied in terms of how they meet their alley and access drives. But in this case, we're trying to take advantage of that great view towards the mountains. And so we're looking at how we can break up that stretch of units into multiple buildings and break up the incremental aspect of the townhouses. And we're doing so by saying, well, we can take advantage of the third floor views and increase the height, create some projecting elements and allow for some units, particularly at the corners, to have roof decks because we have enough height to work with. As we do that, we also can incorporate second-floor balconies, some of which are narrow and deep, some of which are shallow and proud of the surface of the building, some of which are on corners and wrap the corner. And then on the ground floor, we likewise have the opportunity for terraces that open out to the green space in front of them, all of which starts to create a pattern which can vary. You can see they don't necessarily line up with the townhouse units as discrete elements, but can move from one townhouse to the next and create larger and smaller masses that can start to play in various ways as they move from building to building, which is where we are in terms of developing the face to the highway. And at this point, that's as far as we've developed. We're looking for your feedback and thoughts as we move forward. And I'll stop there unless anybody wants to add anything from our team. I assume we're all just available to take questions from you, the board.
Thanks, Adrian. Anybody else from your team before we go to board questions? Nope. All right, great. Thanks for the presentation and for all the clarifications. Do we have any questions for Adrian and his team? Mel.
Thank you, George. Good evening, Adrian. Thank you for the presentation.
I'm not sitting across the street from you right now, but...
I was going to disclose, Adrian is my neighbor right across the street. So I have a question. I'm thinking that I read your drawings such that you are proposing more cars and is required, you're like 213% or 100%. Do you remember what that number is anyway?
I think that...
213, yeah.
We're showing right now two cars per dwelling unit where one car is required, and we're also showing guest parking. So that is, I believe, what you're referring to.
That's what I'm referring to. And the number you have is 200, you're providing 213% of what's required. So my question is regards to both Boulder Valley Com Plan and site review. If this is having a relationship to the walkable neighborhood criteria that we like to incorporate, how does that sort of over overindulging in cars contribute to a walkable neighborhood concept?
Yeah, I think that's a really interesting question. As you know, the code just recently changed in relation to townhouses and relation to multifamily altogether, whereby you're only required now to provide one car per dwelling unit in multifamily projects such as this, or I should say in townhouses, whereas it has previously been required on a bedroom basis. One car per one bedroom, one and a half for two, two cars for three, and so on. This being a project in Gun Barrel, which is not exactly like being in Spark Development, which, by the way, is right next to the railroad tracks, as you may recall. It doesn't have the same level of service to their residents. And I'm going to let John from Crescent speak to this a little bit. But they felt very strongly that to not presume that one car in this instance was going to be sufficient for the needs of the residents here. And John, do you want to add to this?
Yes, Adrian, you're exactly right. We believe the clientele, the missing middle here will either be a roommate situation or people in families sharing living quarters and likely to have two cars per unit. Plus, with the Boulder lifestyle, we also considered that the need to store bikes, kayaks, other outdoor equipment to be very important to the overall success absorption of the project. So that is why we insisted on two-car garages.
Yeah, and I'll just mention that if there's not a need for that second car, we have a lot of confidence that Boulder residents will fill up that space with stuff, such as bikes, kayaks, and so on.
Okay, thank you for that. I have one more question regarding the site criteria. And that is the same one I asked staff. You show just one housing type. So what would be your strategy to try to meet the two housing type requirement?
Well, I think we'll certainly abide by whatever the site review criteria is. And Crescent felt pretty strongly that the townhouse typology was what was most needed in this community. And you know, if the board has some thoughts about that and if the site review criterion demands it, I'm sure Crescent will respond accordingly.
Okay, I would just curious as to whether you had a... The way you articulated the development of the buildings themselves and the way access works, you know, it's pretty townhouse-focused, though I was just curious as to how that is a required criteria in the site review. So I just want to put that out there. You don't need to try to solve the problem.
Well, I think that the requirement, if it's a hard and fast one, I'm sure we'll respond appropriately. You know, the end units, particularly along the street side, and there are opportunities for turning those into flats. I think what you're talking about is not a lot of units. So if we have to go that route, I'm sure Crescent will respond appropriately.
Right. Great. Those are my questions. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mel. Kurt.
Thanks. Hi, Adrian. Thank you for the presentation. You mentioned the need for a deceleration lane on Spine, and I either missed this in the presentation or in the memo or something. But can you talk more about who's requiring that and why? And maybe this is more of a staff question.
Well, we do have Wyatt Dubois from, or is it Dubose? I don't know, from JBA. And Wyatt, do you want to, I think you're there. Don't see you. Wyatt, are you there? Well, maybe staff has somebody that can address it, but it's not coming from us. I'll tell you that.
Okay. Okay, well, I will ask later of staff then. One other question for you. I thought, and I may have been confused about this, but I thought you were saying that the diagonal, the units that are on the diagonal that are facing the diagonal highway, that the front door would be on that western, northwestern side.
No.
But, okay, the front door is on the street side.
Correct, correct. And we see that as a shared street. We will be providing traffic calming measures and treating that as more of a one-earth-like space because we do see that as part of the life of that neighborhood on a daily basis, adjacent to the green space and so on. And we did not want to put cars on the diagonal highway side, which meant we would end up having garage doors along there. And it just felt like it was inappropriate.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Adrian. I have two questions about, I think, we call it internal mobility in the site. One of them is about access to that shared triangle of open space in the center. And what do you see as pathways from some of the outlying units to that space?
Just for clarity, by the outlying units, are you referring the ones to the west or to the south and east?
Yeah, I always get a little bit disoriented with cardinal directions in Gun Barrel, so I'll refer to street names. Units along Spine and then the units along Gun Barrel Avenue.
Let me just pull up the drawing again. I think this gets back to the point that I was starting to make with Kurt, is that we see this as a calmed interior, internal roadway that would provide a low-speed limit. Every time you come into this, we would interrupt it with a brake in the building, which provides opportunities for planting to be visible. And then you'd have to come in at a right angle and turn. And then eventually, likewise, from the secondary loop, you'd come in and turn. And then from the right-of-way, it slowed down immediately. So we'll do everything we can to make this a pedestrian-friendly environment. Yes, there are right now brakes in it that allow, at these points, transitions from both sides of the one-earth itself. It's, I'm certain, we're trying to provide as much guest parking as is practical. And so how much we will need or be allowed, we'll still have to work with staff on. And likewise, guest bike parking is associated with those linkages and that green space internal to the site. I don't know if that's answering your question, but...
Somewhat. I'll save more for comments later. The second question was to ask about your strategy for the amount and placement of guest parking. I'm seeing most of that, I think, along that main diagonal accessway next to the shared green space. So how much guest parking are you looking for?
Well, there's also added parking along the street, which doesn't exist today. I mean, there's nobody there, but we're actually showing that inboard of the protected bike lane. And you can see here the deceleration lane then turning in and then providing additional guest parking along the street frontage on Gun Barrel Avenue that is accessible directly to the units of sidewalk link.
And then what are you showing for guest parking adjacent to the central green area?
Along here?
Yeah.
You mean how many or...
Yeah, and that is, am I reading that correctly, that that is programmed as a guest parking?
That is guest parking there, yes. Yeah. Kate, you know how many we got?
Yeah. Hi, sorry. Let's see, we had about... I think we had about 19 spaces there, give or take.
And what are you aiming for per unit?
In terms of how much per unit?
Yeah, because I know you've got two-car garages on each of the actual units. So how much additional parking are you trying to achieve here?
I don't know that we can actually say that we're targeting a number. What we wanted to do was make sure that residents were not parking in the guest parking spaces, that they had sufficient parking, that they weren't spilling over into guest spaces. And John, do you want to speak to this in terms of Crescent's intention?
It's just to make the community as accessible and friendly as it can be. I think we're expecting, you know, visitors to come and meet with residents. We don't have a specific target. We're just trying to make it easy for people to visit residents and also to access the park, which will be open to the public, the little triangle there, as well as the conservation easement.
Okay, thank you.
Mason.
Thank you. So I was also kind of curious about the parking situation. It seemed like a lot, but understand your points that are made. Have you all explored any shared parking arrangements with the businesses on either side of this area?
We have not. Medtronics doesn't really have a path through the site that's accessible from the residents. Celestial Seasonings parking is, I believe, on the south side of their building, which is quite a distance away as well. No, no, we haven't, as I'm not really sure how practical that would be.
Great, that was my only question.
Mark.
Adrian, did you, did you or your team inquire with staff, evaluate, sketch up any plans that might have vacated or... vacated or moved the bike path more to the central area of the development, pushing the development uh a little to the southwest and creating more open space in the center. Uh, or is the is the bike path easement something that you are just treated as a given that you had to deal with in its current location?
Yes, thank you, Mark. That's that's a very interesting point. We we did not question um its location in part because um it I believe is connecting to the requirement for a similar bike path on the property to the south. Um, I think if it did show as coming through the site as a kind of shared street as opposed to a dedicated and protected bike lane, there's a logic to support what you're suggesting and I'm 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 intrigued by it definitely. Um, because that does push everything westward along with the um deceleration lane and so on. I mean, if we don't need to do that deceleration lane, if we don't need to do that bike path, we don't have to then move that drainage easement that gives us twenty-five more feet to deal with probably. I shouldn't say twenty-five more feet. It it would give us significantly more space on the internal greenway, yes.
But but you didn't, um, it's not something that you have really evaluated other than just kind of on the fly here?
No, uh, but I think it's a great idea, honestly. And I'm happy to to discuss it with transportation if if there's a if there's a direction from the board to look into it.
Okay, thanks. Um, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Let's see, any questions? I'll go. Um, I don't have that many questions. Uh, just a quick question for you, Adrian. If um if you wouldn't mind, uh, do you do you have access? Can you pull up the the uh site plan again?
Yes.
So kind of follow it up a little bit on what Claudia was um Claudia was talking about. No, no problem. Wait for it to be back up because I think it's helpful to look at it when we talk about it. And back to the question that I had for staff around building length along with, I think some of what Claudia was might have been getting to was sort of permeability between these buildings and how people like if I look at the long building on the north side by Spine Road. If I'm living in the middle of that building and I want to get to that triangular park area, internal community area, how do I go about doing that? And have you thought about permeating these structures in the middle somewhere, both that one and the one that 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 fronts that triangular park to allow better access?
Yeah. Um, I I think it's a fair point and I guess the question for me is how long is too long when you consider a city block in Boulder, which is not very long, is three hundred feet? Is a city block, this is in the older part of town, is a city block too long? Um, also you know, if you look at the context of this and how often their buildings are 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 penetrated um in the adjacent neighborhoods, I think you won't find that we're much different from it. Um, but of course, the planning board has prerogative to to say this is what we want and we'll certainly do what we need to do.
Okay, um, yeah, I yeah, I just wanted to understand your your perspective on that. Thanks.
Yeah.
Um, I don't have other questions. Um, does anyone have any uh Laura, I didn't see a question from you and um, anyone have any other uh clarifying questions before um we go to public comment?
All right. Thank you, Adrian and John and team. Appreciate it. If um if you guys wouldn't mind turning off your uh video, yeah, that'd be great. And I'll leave it to Vivian to conduct the public comment.
Thank you, Chair. So we have about six people who've raised their hand so far. Um, if you do not have your first and last name displayed here, please go ahead and send me that using the Q and A function, which is meant for technical issues such as this um or process related questions, but not for discussions related to the public hearing item. Um, each person will have three minutes, so I'll just call on you in the order that you raised your hand. We'll start with Chris Goodman.
Oh, and um before before we start, Vivian, um, I just wanted to use that same disclosure language that we have in the past. Um, if you don't have access to it, I can read it off. That the board requests that prior to offering uh testimony, uh, the speaker disclosed any financial or business relationship with the applicant, the project um or neighbors. This includes any paid compensation. It would also be helpful if uh the speaker disclosed any membership or affiliation that would affect their testimony. Um, so we we ask that as a board, just so we understand um perspectives, um, but appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that. Okay, Chris Goodman followed by Julie Die. Please go ahead, Chris. You have three minutes. And you have to unmute from your end. We can hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay, great. My name is Chris Goodman and I live in Orchard Creek, which backs to Celestial Seasonings. Um, as a resident of Boulder for more than thirty years, I've seen a lot of empty promises from the city. We feel we, the residents and taxpayers of the city of Boulder out here in the celestial property area have been neglected and let down repeatedly with empty promises from the city uh with the city parks of Gunbarrel with promises to sub of a sub community plan never implemented by the city currently. Um, city Boulder planners say we need to preserve industrial lands and not build more residential housing. The plans for this property have a one nineteen highway address. How would residents access highway one nineteen? This is a closed neighborhood. This build would offer nothing for the existing community. It is not a walkable community. We've lived here for twenty years. Never have we walked to King Supers. Once we rode the bikes with the kids and it almost killed everybody. Um, and we're relatively athletic, you know, it's just a long uh path there. Um, there's zero open space or green space included in these plans for the community. We already have no public parks close by. Nothing is walkable. The community open space for residents of Gun Barrel, we have nothing. We lack parks, recreational centers, trails, dog parks. The list is long. We don't feel included in the city of Boulder. We feel that this is the primary area that they're building without with disregard for the community that exists here. Um, I'm concerned about the conservation easement issue. I'm concerned about the prairie dogs and um protecting them. Gunbarrel needs a sub community plan, one that's well thought out and considers the community that lives here. I just feel really frustrated with the whole thing and feel unheard by the city. Anyway, one of the top priorities in my opinion of the city needs to be getting a plan together for the Gunbarrel area. This, I don't know if this is a green build or not, but that's a concern for me. The parking that's proposed on spine. This is a one lane road that is already deteriorating. And it's just going to get worse with the more people that we have traveling on it. We are not a walkable community. We're hardly. I don't believe we're a bikeable community. Everyone's going to need a car. A thousand new residents with both developments combined, our city, our community can. Sorry, I lost my place in my notes. Um, I wanted to mention that RTD pulled their bus service off of Spine Road. We've had to drive our kids to high school the entire time they were in high school. So there is no bus service along spine right now, at least not one that's usable or dependable. Anyway, I guess that's it. I really ask that you please consider the wildlife habitat that would be destroyed and the fact that we have no public parks. Thank you.
Thank you for being here and sharing your comments with the board. Um, next up, we have Julie Die. You have three minutes. Please go ahead, followed by Rona Unsell. Please go ahead, Julie.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Julie Die. I live in Gunbarrel and the city of Boulder. I'm on the board of the Gunbarrel Community Alliance. Here we go again. New board members, new proposal. So let me reintroduce you to Gunbarrel. You can't see us, but we're here and Gunbarrel is tired. Why? Because the city and the county go back on their promises to us over and over. Despite approval in two thousand and six, we lost our designated Gunbarrel downtown space and pedestrian area to another development. The city did not honor the Celestial Seasonings P U D, which promised community recreational spaces. And we were there on November seventh, when you extended the rules to give the developers of the Celestial Seasonings development an unprecedented total of seven years to complete their build. Gunbarrel is the poster child for what happens when developments are permitted without a comprehensive sub community plan. We continue to lack amenities in our much more than fifteen minute neighborhood like the thirty-three minute one point four mile walk from the proposed development site to the grocery store to the closest public playground at two point six miles across the diagonal. And now our only public school in Gunbarrel, Heatherwood Elementary, is on the chopping block. This rental development offers absolutely no benefits to our community, not even onsite affordable housing, and we lose IM. All these developers do is take. The Gunbarrel Sub-Community Plan was a top five issue at the two thousand and twenty-one City Council Retreat, marked as a priority for the BVCP midterm update. The previous planning board also unanimously voted to prioritize the Gunbarrel Sub-Community Plan. You all don't remember, but we do. Each time we get new members on any board, we lose all institutional history, all promises. Gunbarrel is again asking that you hold approval on this until there is an approved plan. Fulfill your promises. We also feel it is important to remind you that we are the affordable housing part of Boulder. We are more diverse and we support affordable housing. We are YIMBY, but with a plan that is supported by services and infrastructure. We are asking for planned and orderly growth. Lastly, based on the comments tonight, we are asking the board to please come by this site when the trains go by and when the trucks are coming to and from this working twenty-four hour factory and hear how extraordinarily loud this location is. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Next, we have Rona Unsell, followed by Linda Zeepe. Please go ahead, Rona.
There we go. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I couldn't agree more with Julie. We are, I've lived here for twenty-four years and I have seen planning boards come and go. Same thing she said. You ignore our request to to help our community form, to have a to have parks, to have um, you know, a sub community plan. This has been promised to us and now we're right back starting over again. Uh, we have, you know, we have no green space on this plan. They disre you're disregarding existing residents of Gunbarrel. We we do feel unheard, tremendously unheard. You're allowing developers to just go and cherry pick uh our habitat out here. Just pick the lots they want that have the views that make them money. There's not even affordable housing in this project. So there's nothing in it for our community. This brings, you know, we have twelve hundred vacant units in Boulder already and two thousand vacant units in Boulder County. I mean, we don't need more housing out here. Gunbarrel, as Julie said, Gunbarrel is affordable housing. We have plenty of vacant units. You're disregarding the people who live here and just turning it over to developers. It's just so frustrating for all of us. I'm a good community, you know, citizen. I I work to help my community and you ignore us. Just ignore us. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight. So we'll continue to Linda Zeepe, followed by Irene Hilson. Linda, you're up. You're up. We can't hear you, Linda. Please introduce yourself. I'm not sure I pronounced your name correctly. You've done mute from your end. Wait a couple seconds. And otherwise, move on to Irene and then come back to Linda. All right, Linda, we'll come back to you. Irene, uh, I know you're joining us by phone, so you have to um hit star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Irene. I also am a resident of Gunbarrel. I have no financial disclosures. I did want to say that I agree with um the first public speaker and with Julie that that area is very hard to um access. And looking at the apartments that were built in Gunbarrel uh Center and Apex and also Boulder Views, a lot of them have high vacancies. So I don't understand why we're building more developments um other than for the developers and investors. And that is a concern for me. Um, and I will just make a statement on the train noise. Um, I do know that a study was done when Apex was built and they addressed the sound issue, so I don't think that's as much an issue as the safety of the railroad being so close to the buildings and sparking fires. Um, we've had a few of those and we've also had a piece of train uh wheel break off. So that would be my comments for this project. I have many more for the next one.
Thank you, Irene. Let's try Linda again. See if we can hear you this time, Linda. So we can't hear you, Linda, but you can try sending me a message through the Q and A and letting me know if you're joining by phone and I can help you troubleshoot. Um, next we have Angie Mashaw, followed by April Lyons. Please go ahead, Angie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Angie Mashaw. I live at four six two six Burgundy Lane in Huntington Point. Townhome style condos and these are so different than my townhome style condos and I'd really like Mr. Sofa and all of you to come to the neighborhood and take a look at what is in the neighborhood and the connectivity that we have between buildings, between developments. We have Hunter Creek. We've got Powderhorn. We have uh Habitat, Willowbrook and Huntington Point condominium condos. All different units, all different styles, and this doesn't look anything like anything in this neighborhood. Um, the stacked over garages. My unit is a garage, but I have one, it's a two story with a basement. They can build basements if they'd like to spend the money to dig a hole and provide that to the residents. And I really do encourage you guys, my name, you have it, my phone number, I can give it to you. Please come. I'm the president of my HOA and I'm also the president of Gunbarrel Commons Park. That is a private park. It is not a public park. It's a ten acre park. It costs well over a hundred thousand dollars a year to maintain. It's for our residents. It's not for these new developments. The pet area has not been approved. If you allow dogs in this property, I know exactly where they're going to go. They're going to come to my private park with their dogs and it's not a dog park. And it's off leash for well behaved dogs, but we have our own issues. But when I look at the size of that open space that you're providing, it's a half an acre. A half an acre, and I bet some of you grew up in neighborhoods that had quarter to half acre to acre lots that you lived on. When you put that many units with half an acre and cars parked all around it, where are the kids are going to go? They're going to run out in the street? I mean, there is no you, it's just the most bizarre layout for open space in my opinion. And the place needs amenities. There's not amenities for your community. That half acre park is not going to cut it in Boulder. So there's a lot of other things. We need a sub community pan plan. RTD is not servicing this area. The light industrial is disappearing. And again, please, I would absolutely meet with you and so would my neighbors. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for listening. I really hope you hear us.
Thank you, Angie. We have four more people waiting to speak. Um, April Lyons, you're next, followed by Dorothy Donahue. Please go ahead, April.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, so I'm April Lyons. I live in Gun Barrel and I'm on, I'm a board member on the Gun Barrel Community Alliance. Uh, we represent 500 disheartened members. Who have almost given up, um, on having our voices heard. So I own a small business in Boulder. I'm worried about my sustainability in Boulder. Because since night, since 2017, the city has lost 6,000 residents. And it's predicted that the city of Boulder will lose 6,000 more in the next five years. So it makes sense why this is happening. Um, the views are being blocked. The wildlife is being paved over. There's tons of traffic and emissions. All the housing is overpriced rentals. Many people live in Boulder because of the beauty and the fresh air. But it's becoming too much of a fight for the missing middle to contend with. This project will not help. It has no community benefits, has been said, especially for Gun Barrel. It has no opportunity to buy and no affordable housing. Even the people who might occupy, occupy these rentals or these townhomes, they're going to be paying so much. They're going to be paying over $6,000. I mean, efficiency out here is, is more than 2,000. They'll have no community benefits and they'll have 6,000, 600 residents moving in across the street with that celestial seasonings development. If these residents, if they could wanted to drive 20 to 40 minutes in any direction, they would have the opportunity to buy something. 85% of people in Erie and other surrounding areas own their own houses or condos. In Boulder, only 46% of people own. That's pretty sad. So I think we really need to look at this. Is this really what we want? So we know this land at some point will probably be developed. That's, might be obvious, but this is industrial land for a reason. You know, the Boulder, the Boulder city planners, they said that future economic growth depends on industrial land, not just housing. So I think we would feel better in Gun Barrel if we had some kind of plan in place that would add value to this area. Future generations wouldn't resent us completely. Seems like the city is making room for all these futures, this big future rush of residents coming in. But they're not listening to who is already here. This, this isn't green. The open space is uneasement. The path that's in the back, it leads to nothing, that walking path. The railroad, the railroad tracks, I mean, they have vibrations. It's loud out here. It's loud. And then the bird sanctuary they talk about, we're killing all their food. They eat the prairie dogs out here. They're not, there's no bird sanctuary that's going to happen. This is not missing middle housing at all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, April. Next with Dorothy Donahue and then we'll try Linda, um, again. Please go ahead, Dorothy.
Uh, hello to the planning board. I'm Dorothy Donahue and, um, I live in Gun Barrel for the past 25 years. Pay taxes to the city of Boulder and I am a member of the Gun Barrel Community Alliance. Um, I think this has been said a couple of times, but have you, any of you been? Over to Gun Barrel and viewed where this apartment complex is going to be? If not, I hope you do. I encourage you to come and stand on this land and feel what it feels like to have, be so close. To the highway, 119, the trains, the tracks and the 24 seven factory. We were assured by the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan that the buildings would be, and I have this in quotes, appropriate to the area and the benefits provided. Do you truly feel another poorly planned apartment complex shoved onto Spine Road is appropriate or beneficial? My second question is, will the developer compensate Gun Barrel for the wear and tear on Spine Road? Will suffered after the trucks and the debris from the construction? We who live close to the proposed development will have to put up with the dust, trucks, traffic, debris. And noise during the construction. After the apartments are built, we will be left with more potholes, more traffic, less parking and ugly buildings blocking our view of the mountains. My third question is, does the developer have a plan for relocating the prairie dogs? The developer who is from Texas, I hear, had a bizarre idea that the prairie dogs on this land would just scamper off into another area. Um, what is the real plan for the prairie dogs? And lastly, which is the most important, is will the planning board keep their promise to have a subcommittee? Before this vote is on, voted on. Both the city council and the planning board unanimously voted to prioritize the Gun Barrel Sub Community Plan. Gun Barrel expects you to live up to that commitment. Thank you for my time, for letting me talk.
Thank you, Dorothy. All right, let's try Linda. Um, and if that doesn't work, we'll move on to Randall, Erica Clark. Linda? Hope we can hear you this time. Okay, not successful. Uh, Randall, Erica Clark, please go ahead. You have three minutes. Um, and then Lynn Siegel will be up. Go ahead, Randall.
Oh, I see. Did I unmute correctly?
Yes, we can hear you.
Very much. Um, I want to say that I really appreciated some of the people's questions, many of your questions, because I think you were. Hitting the heart of what concerns a lot of us and I'm also a member of the Gun Barrel Community Alliance. And as she said, there are 500 of us and I think that. What you do out here is going to affect the whole city. And I, I think everything that has said before me, I really wasn't prepared to speak tonight. I don't have a speech, so I'm just going to say I agree with absolutely everything. Everyone has said, and I think. It's made me realize, I think you really need to have someone from our community, make it Angie, make it April, make it somebody from GCA, the Gun Barrel Community Alliance to. To talk to you about this. We walk this neighborhood all the time. We do not walk. To King's Super, this is not a walkable neighborhood. That's a myth. And basically Boulder said they want walkable neighborhoods. So why they're building this out here makes no sense to me. And I think it's very important to realize that what Boulder needs, what you all need who live downtown, don't come out here. Um, is individual homes. If we really want to. Grow Boulder in a way that is going to be good for everybody. Um, I think that it's crazy to think of parking on Spine Road. Spine Road is two very narrow roads. Two, it's two, it's one lane, two lanes. It's not a one way, like there was a picture of a one way street between townhouses. So to think, they're already parked there. And it's very close and it's pretty dangerous. People do park there on one side, on the east side, but not on the west side. There's no room for any parking on the west side. So somebody has not really looked at. Spine Road nor watched or nor measured traffic. And to give this an address on diagonal is crazy. You can see there's no way to enter from diagonal. So that's, that's, that should be eliminated right away. There's no diagonal address here. Um, I think it's very important to understand what Angie was talking about, about as far as public parks. There is a park. That people use who have dogs, every single person in this complex, since there is no place for dogs, is going to be walking their dogs over to the other park. And therefore they need to contribute to it. But to bring in another thousand families, which means 2,000 cars, let's be real. We already know that it's going to require two cars to live in this neighborhood that's not walkable. So I think. I really think we have to go back to the drawing board, get a sub community plan, which once again. If you would have somebody from Gun Barrel on your committee, we all have an institutional memory. We have taken detailed notes. We can tell you absolutely everything that. The city has told us they would do and we were guaranteed nothing would go forward without a sub, a Gun Barrel Sub Community Plan. I think it's really important for you to do that with us. We have a lot to offer.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next Lynn Siegel followed by Regina Macy. Please go ahead, Lynn.
Hi, um, yeah, I, I don't even live in this area. I live in central Boulder. But this area affects me. Um, I mean, let's face it, this was a land grab a long time ago. We should have never had, you know, the sales tax revenue. Um, annexation. It, and, and now that, like this one little quadrant is left and it's being filled up. Um. The sub community plan, of course, I agree with everyone. This is an indictment of this development. This, uh, every single person has spoken against it. Um, and I watched, you know, years ago, the spine, uh, celestial seasons development go through too. Um. There should be, I know that they have a right to build, okay, but they should got not one subsidy, nothing. Not one height amendment, not one, you know, and it should be industrial. I mean, to start with, and the prairie dogs, that should be done now, not wait for site review, like someone said. You know, this is waiting for a, a predestined outcome. When you say, oh, leave it, you know, it, the train's already running. Then when it comes to site review, then it's just tweaking things later on. This thing needs to be stopped now. A sub community plan made up ahead of time. You know, people don't live in balconies. They don't live in little compartments. They try to get out of them, away from them. And then they jam up the rest of Boulder with congestion. Um, as to affordability, like I've said many times before, the more housing you build. The more unaffordable it gets, and especially in Boulder where there's no indexing to the area median income. You know, in, in town in Boulder, 300 square feet. At 2206 Pearl for $1,700 to $2,600 a month without a parking space. Without one parking space. This is, this is a developer's wet dream. The missing middle is, is, is like Elon Musk in Boulder. That's what the missing middle is. Because the sky's a limit for the AMI. It needs to be indexed. Let's see here, the parks, you know, it, it, people want to get out of their little compartments. And there's nowhere to go except into town, congesting the rest of Boulder. And there's, it's already flooded for the rest of the area. You need 15 minute neighborhoods. This is just horrific.
Thank you, Lynn. I want to remind people to go ahead and raise their hand if they wish to speak for this item. Please go ahead, Regina Macy.
Hi, I'm Regina Macy. Um, everyone has been so eloquent. Um, I'm fairly new to Gun Barrel. And yet, um, I'm appalled at the whole thing that developers keep winning. It's like, what, what's going on here? Why aren't we sticking up for what's going on? What, for the environment? I love land and we're losing it minute by minute in the whole state, not just Boulder, the whole state. It's being racked up by, by development. Um, the other thing is we keep thinking, okay, well, people come in and they say, no problem, we'll change. You know, the, we'll change the industrial to residential. You'll get your land. Don't worry about it. So it's like, you, you make this comprehensive plan. And then developers come in and they do hours and hours and hours and hours and hours of presentation. Everybody's like. Well, what do we tweak this? What if we tweak that? What if we tweak this? What if we tweak that? They get what they want, even though they come in wanting. They want maybe 30 units and they, they propose 150 and then when they get their 30, they're winning. It's very strange and it's very, it's heartfelt for me because I cry a lot when I'm, I lived in Louisville and I. Drove by Superior when that was being built, hill after hill after hill, taken away to housing. And, um, I lost my house in the fire. And yet, and when I came out here, I had a little bit of a sigh of relief because I'm, I'm near, I have a view a little bit of the twin lakes. And I thought, oh my God, there's, there's a speck. And my town, my, my, um. Condo is tiny, but I have a speck to look at and I'm so thankful. But more and more people need this speck. They need places to go. Why don't we have a park? That was proposed a while ago. We should have a park, you know, and, you know, the only, the only people that are going to be winning here are developers. And I just, you know, before this, when everybody was asking questions, I said, oh my God, we're decorating the chairs on the Titanic again. Here we go. And it's, it's nerve wracking. And I, I moved in after the celestial thing happened. And I thought, wow, and, um. Yeah, and Louisville was number one in many, many magazines for years because it's a great little city. Well, the developers saw that and they came in and now we're not on the list at all. So that's kind of an interesting phenomenon. We don't want to be that way. And Boulder has always loved nature, always been a, been a, been a, you know, around for the environment and fought for the environment and. And so on. And I hope we can, can continue to do that and say no to this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. And for everybody who's joined us tonight and contributed for the public hearing. Uh, back over to you, Chair.
Thank you. Um, and thanks everyone for coming out and speaking. Um, your minds and, and supporting, um, Boulder and your community. Um, why don't we take a, uh, if everyone's okay with it, why don't we take a five minute? Uh, let's do, let's do a, no, let's do an eight minute break. We'll be back at 8:15. Um, to get a glass of water and a bio break and, uh, and then we'll, uh, conduct our comments. Thanks. All right. Looks like, um, still waiting for Claudia?
I'm here.
All right, cool, um, at least the, uh, the board is back, um, it's eight sixteen, um. So, uh, Thomas or Vivian, would you mind putting up the, um, the key considerations for the board? Or Allison, sorry?
George, you seem frozen.
I'm sorry? Can someone put that up for us?
George, I had one more question for staff, if I could ask that.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I just want that popped up so we can have a discussion, but go ahead with your question.
Okay, thank you, um, Steph, my question is about the, the proposed, what the applicant referred to as the requirement for a deceleration lane. Is, is anybody on staff available who can talk about why, why that might be required? I assume it's something in the DCS, but I'm not familiar with anything, uh, referring to that. So if there were any illumination of that, that would be great.
Oh yeah, I can try to answer, um, a- as far as the deceleration lane. Um, I, I'm not sure, I do know that, um, part of the, I'm just pulling up, I know it's the, um, the portion of the right away along spine, um, will require certain street improvements. Um, including a seven foot wide buffered bike lane, uh, eight foot wide on-street parking, eight and a half foot wide buffered planting strip and a minimum of five foot wide detached sidewalk. And then still allow for a twelve foot wide travel lane. Um, and that will be part of a right-of-way dedication, uh, once they submit for site review.
Okay, thank you for that, Allison, but you're not aware of the deceleration lane that they were specifically referring to?
I, I'm not, um, but that didn't, uh, come up, I, you know, that would have come from the engineers. Um, but I'm not aware of the deceleration lane.
Yeah, okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Um, before we get started, we've got the, um, the, uh, um, key issues for discussion, last time, we went through them each, all three. Mark, do you have a preference, I, I, I kind of, uh, I could go either way, so curious what your thoughts are, since you had a preference last time. It's pretty detailed.
Um, I, I think i- in terms of a speaker kind of, uh, unmuting that sort of thing, there's some efficiencies to be gained by doing that. I think there's some continuity of thought, but sometimes when we say, gee, does it meet BBCP goals? And do we have, uh, comments on site design? I think that it kind of naturally flows.
Let's do, let's do it one board member by one board member and hit all three issues. I think that's a great idea, um, especially since we're trying to be relatively efficient with our time, given we've got a whole other public hearing that's probably going to be just as involved. Um, so Kurt, are you ready to speak to all this, you have your hand up?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to have it up, but yes, I can go ahead.
All right, why don't you go first, Kurt? Since you volunteered yourself.
So I'll start off by saying that I'm, okay, can you hear me? Oh. Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, um, sorry. I am very familiar with this site, I used to work for many years on Longbow, um, right across from Medtronic. So I would go by this twice a day, uh, writing down Pioneer and then through the, um, Celestial Seasonings, uh, property and then right past this. So, uh, I saw it twice a day for many, many years. Um, and, um, so I have, uh, let's see, a number of comments. First of all, I'm concerned about the Flora area transfer that was, that's referred to. This seems like a very significant change to the PUD. Um, it may be justified, but it, the, the mechanism, um, seems a little strange. Uh, so I, certainly if that, if it came back for site review as a call up, I think it would be something that would be very important for the board to consider. Uh, I do feel that this is a, a pretty appropriate place for, um, residential from the standpoint of the immediate surroundings. Uh, the west side of Medtronic is very benign in terms of activity. And so, uh, I think that there, there wouldn't be disturbance, for example, of residential uses here. It is unfortunately very far from most kinds of services or attractions. Uh, as many speakers pointed out, there's no park nearby. It is quite a long ways to the, to the King Supers and to, um, most of the other services. There's Beyond the Mountain Brewing, um, right on Longbow. There used to be the Celestial Seasons Cafe, which I think is still closed now. Um, so there's not much available right nearby. Uh, I have concerns about the amount of usable open space given, that's being proposed, given that the Conservation Eastman area, my understanding is, it's kind of a strange situation, but in my understanding is that that OSMP would not allow that to be really a usable open space, other than possibly the multi-use path. Uh, it certainly sounds like a dog park or other kinds of active uses would not be considered compatible. And it would probably be, OSMP would want it to be largely, um, uh, the prairie dog habitat. And so the, really the, the usable open space is just a very small triangle in the middle. I am strongly supportive of townhouse style development. I think we, we have got a real shortage of that in Boulder. And so I like seeing more, however, these are quite large. Uh, two thousand and twenty-five hundred square feet with double car garages. Those, uh, the, the, given the size and the, um, a- and what as a result will be the, the cost of them. I find the designs not compatible with BBCP policies, seven point oh two, affordable housing goals, seven point oh seven, mixture of housing types and seven seventeen market affordability. So I would like to see significantly smaller and more affordable townhouses. I'll note that in the, the item that's coming up, uh, townhouses are proposed and they're proposed at twelve hundred square feet. I understand the applicant probably wouldn't want to go that low, but I think two thousand and twenty-five hundred is, is higher than is appropriate. Uh, for, and, and higher than consistent with the BBCP policies. Uh, the parking, especially with the dedicated, um, double car garages is not consistent with our some shared unbundled managed priced, uh, parking policies. And, um, so I think that as proposed, um, it, it, it's not consistent with a, a lot of the, the BBCP, um, policies in that regard. I, I would, um, I could imagine a, a single car garage and then more shared parking of some sort. Um, I would also like to see an encouragement of on-street parking as much as possible, which would activate the street. I'm concerned that all these garage loaded units, uh, on the east and south side in particular, uh, would, the, the, the fronts would just be sort of fictitious fronts. Um, that would not be activated because everybody would be driving into their garages in the back. Um, I would like to understand more about this deceleration lane. I think that if that could be, well, yeah, if that could be avoided, then it would allow more flexibility. Um, allow some of the, the, the units on the east to be pushed further east and allow more of the open space at the center. Could potentially gain quite a bit of usable open space as opposed to the, um, the not very usable, just sort of setback, uh, space on the east side. Um, and I would like to see if at all possible in a TDM plan, I, I asked a question about the, the shuttle, um, that is proposed to be paid for by the Celestial Seasonings property, paid for in part. And I would like to see a TDM plan include significant support for that. Um, approximately on the same order of magnitude as the Celestial Seasonings property would be providing. So those are my comments.
Great, thank you. Um, before, I don't see anyone else's hand raised yet, uh, before, before we go to the next set of comments, as he marked just popped up. Um, if, uh, if everyone could try to bucket their comments into those three categories concisely. And also, um, i- if you're, if you find your, if, if we find ourselves repeating each other, as I, I, I sense we might. Um, if you could, um, just, uh, try to be concise with, uh, agreement with different colleagues and, and specify the issue and then move on. Just, uh, because we're trying to give feedback to the developer. Um, but, uh, but I, I also want to respect, um, what we've got coming up, so thanks, uh, go ahead, Mark.
George, did you just call on me, is that what I just heard? Okay, thank you, yeah, I, I'm, again, a little shaky on the internet connection, so, um, I, well, I concur with Kurt on many things, I actually am appreciative of the applicant, uh, coming forth with housing types that are more, um, designed around what a, uh, a four-member family, uh, four, five, three, four, five member family might, uh, be interested in. And, um, so, and as a planning board lately, we've seen a lot of, a lot of projects that have single housing types. And I've said repeatedly that, well, other projects will fulfill the requirement in the BBCP for a variety of housing types. And here we have a project coming before us that, uh, yes, the units are larger. Um, and yes, we may be able to have more units if they were smaller. Um, however, I, I do appreciate that some families, some places, uh, will want, uh, to have a house, uh, housing type that is in this sort of size range. So in general, I think that this project, um, based on its location and housing type and design in general, uh, fulfills, um, the BBC requirements. I have two really deep concerns though, and those are focused around, um, connections and open space and specifically usable open space, but, uh, and, and these are interrelated. Um, so I want to say that, uh, we have a, a housing development that will be completed someday just to the south and west. And, um, that coordination and connection between this site and the other site. And I know that we, we, uh, we can't really condition one site on what another site does. But we can, we can condition and advise that these properties need to connect. And you need to be able to walk or ride your bike, um, from this site as, as Kurt described, to, uh, through the celestial property over to Pioneer Street. Pioneer Street leads to J Road and the Cottonwood Trail. Cottonwood Trail leads to Thirtieth and, uh, Valmont. And so it's, it's, there, there are some, uh, to the south, there are definitely connections that are possible and need to be enhanced. Um, conversely, we have a bike path on the western edge of this property that seems to be a foregone conclusion from some bygone era. Um, that really goes nowhere and, and does nothing for, even though it's counted as open space. It's, it's not usable open space and it's a, it's a path that doesn't really serve many purposes. I would be, uh, in much great favor to see the project. I would be uh, in much great favor to see the project. Take that path and that open space that is west. Um, as linear, we keep seeing projects that have linear open space and it counts towards the open space total. But in terms of functioning as a space that a person wants to be, it's a long linear strip next to a highway. And um, I would much prefer to see that brought to the interior of the project. Where it would be uh, the potential for much greater community access, quieter. Open space with additional programming. I think that 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 this this project is lacking. Programmed open space. You have a triangle there with a grilling area. Um, but absent a pool, absent um, a clubhouse, a shared space. Absent um, a pump track, a kids playground, uh, these sort of amenities. And even a dog park, if you're gonna have a dog park, let's bring it to the middle where people get together versus out. At the edge of the highway where the road noise is going to make uh, meeting with your neighbors difficult. So uh, I I think I would really encourage the applicant to work with our staff. To see what OSMP parks and wreck, to see what can be done. Uh, to to make those open spaces and community spaces so attractive. That people want to be out in them. And I think about community gardens, there are several in Boulder. And that and that we need to have community gardens and we need to have spaces for people to grow things and to congregate. And uh, it it shouldn't be perfunctory, it should be central to this. So um, my concerns are that the design, from what I can tell at the moment. Has a lot of linear open space, it's not particularly attractive and no real core open space. And there are a lot of ways to enhance connections that uh, are not currently being taken advantage of. That's it.
Thanks, Mark. Go ahead, Claudia.
It's very tough to follow, Mark, because I think you elaborated on many things I just wanted to touch on briefly. Um, so I'll be fast. Um, the first question key issue is the proposal consistent with policies of the BBACP. Um, I think in general, yes, um, I agree with the staff's analysis here. Um, this is an appropriate place for housing, um, and there is a need for additional housing. Um, and of the townhouse type as well, and this does satisfy some of our goals around compact development. Um, I think Kurt's comments about the possibility of market affordable townhouses in this area is a good point. Um, I don't know what that magic size number is, um, but that is something I would keep in mind as this plan is being refined. Um, in terms of the site plan and some of the comments that we've heard around that. Um, like Mark, I am very concerned about usable open space um, in my questions to both staff and the applicant. Um, you may have noticed me really circling around that triangular wedge of open space in the center of the community. I think that is the key to making this a functional, um, pleasant, high-quality. Neighborhood or pocket neighborhood to live in as opposed to just another generic development. And I would be looking for ways as you refine this proposal, um, to increase both the size of that space as possible. And also increase the connections to it, um, from all of the units in this proposed development, so in particular, some of the ones. On the border of the property where you really do have to go for a fairly long walk, um, to access that key community space. Um, and related to that, um, I was asking questions about the guest parking surrounding that space because again. Um, I'm concerned that that use of space is cutting into the usability of that community space on the interior. Um, and I'm particularly concerned about that if there's not a clearly articulated strategy for parking. And what the needs are, um, for both the residents and visitors to this community. Um, yeah, so I think those things are incredibly important also considering what we have heard from the Gunbarrel neighbors. About the lack of um, usable recreation open spaces in the area. Um, and so to the extent that we can provide more attractive spaces within these developments, we're going to be helping with that problem, even though we do not have the ability. Um, at the mo- at this moment in time to address the larger issue of a sub-community plan and park space for the area. The only other thing I wanted to mention, um, was the issue of noise mitigation, which I see is coming up as this moves forward. Um, and I'm specifically thinking about the railroad and the diagonal there. Um, I appreciate your your interest in preserving views for folks who happen to have those particular townhomes. I am worried about noise impacts on this area. And to the extent that there can be planning done in that conservation easement, that strip of land that is there. Um, that that be planned in a way that actually does some natural noise mitigation in addition to the materials that you might be using on the townhouses. So whether that is planting a vegetation, whether that is uh, doing some work to to raise or extend the berm that is there already. That I assume is providing some separation. Um, I would hope that you'd consider those things as well to make these better places for people to live. That's it for me.
Right, uh, Mason.
Great, yeah, so um, starting with the first one, I am a little more aligned with Kurt on this one. There's of course, um, many of the goals, objectives, recommendations of the BBCP that this does. Is compatible with. Uh, I do think affordability is one of the big issues. I I am going to disagree a bit with with Mark here. Um, I live in a town home with my family, two kids. That's our place is considerably smaller. Um, and have uh, love our space and have a great time uh, living in a smaller size. So I think it's totally fine to have something that's maybe more on the range of the fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred square foot. Um, for raising a family. Um, and I know the the um, applicant mentioned this being roommate situation. That would be more than enough for that as well. Um, speaking words more towards my experience living in in this um. In a similar space, it's also a thirty minute, thirty minute walk uh, from my house to the nearest grocery store. And we have one parking spot for our units with, it it's not a guest spot for every unit as well, it's less. Um, and we have no problems um, with parking in our area. Um, we do live across from the high school, so sometimes there is, but only when there's a big event. Um, I will say that I think there's more people going towards the e-bikes, so um, I I know that. Even biking sometimes can be an issue for uh, some folks, but there are more accessible alternative means of transportation than. Having a spot for three cars, you know, for for most units. Um, I am concerned about the lack of some principles in this, um, that's been mentioned already. Um, and then going on to more of number two, um. So I agree with, I agree with Claudia. Uh, she brought the noise. That was a big point for me, being this close to the road track. I do agree with all the comments around the activation of the green space. I have concerns around the the conservation easement. Uh, it counts, um, but it's not going to be, I I don't see it being uh, super usable for folks. I'd like the idea of uh, that Mark brought up about the um, having the bike path. Uh, help activate the space and Claudia mentioning. Having the guest parking there, making the space in the middle more unusable. I had the same thought when I reviewed this. Um, and I do think, as Claudia mentioned, that focusing more on activating that that space in the middle. Um, will help with some of the concerns that we've heard from the community around um, adding public benefit uh, from this design. Um, I do have a concern, I think this is my only, um, only have two new comments. I I do have concerns around the underpass easement. Um, I think it was. Mark that really dove into this, maybe it was George, sorry if I'm getting this wrong. But um, that future bike lane uh, going in between diagonal up and down, it's. It would be very nice for this neighborhood to have direct access as well as the other neighborhoods around it. Um, otherwise, you're gonna have to go a far distance just to get to that bike path, which is gonna make it much less attractive to use. Um, so I do have concerns around vacating that. Uh, and I also didn't see any mention, although it could be coming in site plan. Of green building concepts in this design. I didn't see uh, any drive towards uh, creating a a zero-carbon. Um, uh, building design, so I I hope to see more of that when site review comes around. Uh, that's all my comments.
Yes. Um, so let me see, I. I think that the big issue um, regards to the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. And the direction we um, are desiring. Our new neighborhoods and projects to go into is this whole idea of walkability. And I understand that, you know, the site is where the site is. Um, and there aren't so many amenities, even uh, recreational amenities. Um, beyond commercial amenities easily available. And to that end, I think that the project might want to start considering. Um, that was the idea of the shuttle for a project that hasn't yet started construction, but I think that the um. Uh, responsibility to uh, start getting people out of their cars. And into the community, um, albeit a unwalkable. Maybe unsafe for bikes, et cetera, et cetera. Um. The notion was put out about e-bikes, there are the e-shut, there are the e-scooters, there are. Ways for people to move, I think, if they become available and if um, they become safe. And I think it would behoove this project to look um, beyond the fact that, oh, well. You can't get anywhere without a car and create a lot of par- parking spots. Um, but to think, okay, well, how can we start making an alternative reality out there regards to um. Moving yourself, move movements outside of a car in the neighborhood. So I think walkable is a big part of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, and I don't think that this is is addressing that. Um, in a very uh, direct and maybe creatively. Um, the second one, and I think a lot of my colleagues and certainly the public spoke about this, is the open space, the reality of it. And um, again, you know, discounting. We've got it, it's created there, yeah, the prairie dogs inhabit it, but it's open space. I think we have to be realistic about how the site would be used and um. Put forth um, a vision and a proposition that actually. Gives back to the community and creates livability for the people who are um, moving into this area of uh, Gun Barrel. Um, regards for the conceptual site plan and building design. I would encourage a rethink on what exists out there. I know that there was a very beautiful presentation. Um, Adrian did on looking at the um, exterior. What would be the experience from the cars coming from on the diagonal and what they would see? And that's sort of the formal relationship of the site and the buildings to that. And then, of course, addressing the view. So this is all looking beyond and outside. I would um, suggest to have a rethink and look at the interior of the site. And the community connections and how is this project contributing? Um, look at that with as much rigor as you looked at the uh, sort of more formal. Relationship to the outside. I think that is missing and I think the BBCP and certainly the. The site review criteria begin to speak to um, the uh. Experiential qualities of the project. What will it be like to to live here? Is it just, is it a suburban development? It looks like an urban project, so just getting on to what the building designs, it looks like an urban project, but it's a suburban. Site plan. Everybody gets in and out of their cars to go places. I think we have to kind of like break through and create a hybrid in some manner and and that'll take some creativity. Um, because it's not an easy site to, um, it doesn't have all the answers already there. It's not amenity-rich in the same ways that other neighborhoods might be. I would encourage um, the same amount of rigor and creativity that went into sort of the formal relationships to look at. At what's happening on the inside uh, and within the project and within the community. Um, and I do believe that my my fellow board members and the public have have spoken up pretty. Pretty um, clearly that um, you know, there there's not enough open space, there aren't enough amenities here. And uh, let's, let's take a look at what this project can do to actually make it a better. A better community and start to meet um, the values of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. And how we want our neighborhoods and communities to develop. Those are my comments.
Thanks, ML. Laura?
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna be very brief here and say I do think it is generally compatible with the goals, objectives and recommendations of the BBCP. Uh, feedback on the conceptual site plan and building design. I agree that I think one of the number one issues here is the usable open space. Ideally, you have, you know, public parks and and shared open space for people to go to. The site doesn't have that luxury and we do need to have places for people to get outside, to congregate, um, and to recreate. And so this site is gonna be burdened a little bit with the need to have that open space be really, really usable. And I do want to also agree with, excuse me, with Kurt. That if this comes back to us for site review, if it's called up, I would want a much better understanding of what's going on with that transfer of floor area. Um, and and how how is it being brought back to this site in in the proposal that uh, staff has is. Um, might be supporting and that the applicant is proposing. And in terms of the size of units, I mean, it sounds like. But one of the site review criteria is that they're going to need to have a variety of types of units and it can't just be all townhomes. So I think we will get naturally some some uh, probably some smaller sized units here. But I do agree with Mark that there are families that are going to want larger sized units. So I think that some of that is appropriate, but probably not all of it at, you know, uh, very large townhouse sizes. I live in a single-family home that's fifteen hundred square feet, so um, you know, that that uh, that size category. Does seem quite large uh, for a townhome. And um. I think, oh, and I also agree with Mark on the the need to take a good look at those transportation connections. I don't know um, all of the legalities of the things that Mark has proposed, but I think it bears looking at them for viability, because I think they are good ideas. Those are my comments.
Thanks, Laura. Um, I'll try to be brief too. Uh, be- before I start on my comments, I wanted to make a comment um, to the public, because because almost every comment I heard. From the public was talking about not being heard and wanting a sub-community plan. Um, and number one, I I want to be sure that, you know, that um. Uh, this is as much your meeting as anybody else's meeting and your opportunity to interact with the the um, the city and us. So I thank you. I'm very supportive of a sub-community plan in Gun Barrel. Um, when when we look at a project like this, um, we're essentially looking at an island, right? We we can't see beyond what we're looking at right here. And um, it's very challenging as a board. Um, to make determinations when you look at, um, you know, when you can't see the forest from the trees. And so thank you for illuminating the board a little bit on your perspective, given that you guys live out there. What I see here uh, is uh, kind of uh, what ML alluded to, which is kind of a dense. Townhome community where no one might know each other. Um, it looks extremely car-oriented to me. It looks like it's designed for commuters. That are gonna be pulling in and out of their garages, um, and um, returning home and going to bed. And um, there is uh, to echo a number of my colleagues, I think there is a complete. Lack of usable open space, especially if this is targeted towards uh, multi-person dwellings and family dwellings. Um, I I don't see enough place for those people to recreate in reality. Um, I I also echo the the concern about connections uh, to the adjacent development uh, and the overall community. Um, I I am amazed as a developer myself. Uh, it 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 bears um, repeating that this developer acquired a piece of land. That was entitled for forty-one thousand square feet and is asking for north of quadruple. Um, what he acquired. Um, and I would imagine it's quite a windfall uh, from that perspective. So I would urge the developer to take a step back and maybe um. Look at the density that you're putting on here and instead um try to make it a really communal space. Reduce the number of uh surface parking spaces uh for quote unquote guests. Maybe bring down the spaces uh parked in the townhouses um to one or one point five. Um, and open up, maybe maybe delete a few units and open up that for to amenitize what is not an amenitized area. Um, to create something unique and creative that to ML's point would be maybe a hybrid of a of a. Of an urban and suburban form, given where it's at and um and where uh Gun Barrel is in its evolution. Um. Trying to think if I, and I I I do think, you know, I I don't know if any of my board members brought this up directly. Um, I I am concerned about the environmental impact of this development. I I don't see this being green at all. Um, we're talking about three cars per unit. Um, it just seems counter to a lot of the things that we're reviewing here in Boulder. Um, you know, I thought the the microunit thing was a bit extreme, and I think this is a a bit extreme the other way. And so I would encourage a developer to um to to think about that too. Um, I think that generally categorizes my comments, but just to just to be blunt. Uh, no, I don't believe um this is compatible with the BVCP. To, I I think um the design uh needs a rethink relative to parking, open space, permeability. Uh, and overall density, given the windfall that this developer is experiencing. Um, and other key issues identified by the board, I I'd be supportive of making sure that um this uh site has proper connections. Um, the vacated um uh that that the easement or however that's termed. Um, where it could make a connection to an uh an interior bike path uh on the highway. I also thought that was an excellent point. Maybe it not have been thought of, and maybe it wasn't intended that way. But the truth is, a lot of things on this site weren't intended for this outcome. Um, and so I think that uh when you, we shouldn't say one thing's not intended, but but yet this is okay. And so um, uh, those are all my comments. Um, does anyone have any additional comments that they'd like to share that they um uh before we close this out? Okay. Thanks, everyone in the community for coming. Thanks to the developer and city and staff for their presentation. Um, I think it probably is appropriate to jump directly into our next topic, given um how uh. How much time I anticipate that taking as well. Give me one second, I'm just gonna pull it up. So um, this uh second, oh, I I don't know, before I close that out, um. I I don't know, I'm trying to remember someone on the board, correct me if I'm wrong, does the board have uh, does does the developer have an opportunity for any clarifications that they want from us? I guess I would put that out there to um Adrian um and his team to make sure that you guys have have heard and you don't have any follow-up questions.
Uh, well, thank you, um, board chair and board members. We definitely hear your comments. They're fairly consistent. In relation to uh parking, open space, usability of open space and so forth. Um, I think that we haven't addressed a number of items because we felt that it might be more appropriate to talk about the the um. The legal issues associated with both the the um. The conservation easement and uh the FAR or the allowable area at the time of site review, since they were not. Brought up by staff, and this is supposed to be an opportunity to review the mass and scale and the proximity of of building elements, et cetera. So it didn't seem the right time for us to bring that up, but it certainly was on your mind, and please know that. We're well aware of these issues and whatever windfall this this developer might meet, I can't really speak to. But there are, there's more to this legal story that we'll be happy to get into with staff and before the board. Uh, as we may need to come back to you. Uh, in terms of some of the other points relative to what we can and cannot do in the open space. Uh, pardon me, the conservation easement. That likewise is an an area of legal agreement that um that will be of of issue. And hopefully, the city attorney and and our, our team will be able to work through that. And frankly, I think some of the suggestions about um. Bike paths and how we might do that more effectively, I'm really happy and intrigued to look at. Um, I want to just also mention that at the level of concept review, I think that there's. There's only so much that we can show you in terms of presenting the basic intent of the project. And I appreciate board member Robles's um um recognition of of what we put into. Uh, the the highway facing side, believe me, we're gonna do it on all the rest of the project too. Uh, taking into consideration all your comments. Um, so. We're happy to move forward and um. Thank you for your concerns.
Thanks, Adrian. All right, um, we're gonna move on to our next uh public hearing item. Um. The next public hearing item is the concept plan review and comment request on proposed Boulder Housing Partners redevelopment on three point seven four acres located at sixty-four hundred. Two sixty-five seventy Gun Park Drive and sixty-five sixty Spine Road with twenty-three townhomes in two buildings. One hundred and twenty-four apartments and five buildings and one community building. Uh, the site is largely undeveloped, two existing office buildings on the property would be demolished. Uh, reviewed under case number L U R two thousand twenty-three zero 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 six zero.
All right, wonderful. Um, good evening, planning board members. Can you hear me okay and see my screen? Great. Okay, I'm Shannon Muller with the City of Boulder Planning Department, and I'm pleased to be here tonight to give you a overview of the Sunset Park Concept Plan. Um, so as Allison mentioned earlier, this includes um the information provided in staff's memo. A basic description of the site and surroundings and some key issues for discussion. So again, the purpose of a concept plan review is to look at a general development plan for a site so that the applicant can receive feedback from. The board, the public and staff prior to development of more detailed site plans. So no formal action is being taken on this project tonight. This property was posted and public notice was provided to property owners within six hundred feet of the site. There were some written public comments that were received that were included in the board's packet. These included one comment in support of the proposal as well as some comments with questions about the development and its um. Concerns about its design in relationship to neighboring properties. So here you can see the location of the property. It's at the southeast corner of Gun Park Drive and Spine Road. It's approximately three point seven four acres and bordered by developed properties on all sides. Um, as mentioned earlier, it contains two existing two-story office buildings. Upon redevelopment with the proposed affordable housing project, those buildings would be removed. Surrounding properties include to the west, um, a seventy thousand square foot, thirty-two foot tall warehouse building. Partially occupied by Blue Mountain Arts. To the north across Gun Park Drive is the Gun Barrel Shopping Center anchored by King Supers with a mix of retail, restaurant and service uses. To the northeast across Gun Park Drive is the Gun Barrel Center Apartments, which includes apartments in forty-two foot tall three-story buildings as well as commercial space. Just to the east are two thirty-two foot tall two-story office buildings. And just to the south in unincorporated Boulder County are the Meadow Creek Apartments, which are two-story buildings. Here are some additional photos um of the site and views towards surrounding properties. This site has been previously prepared for development, so there are no significant natural features on the site. It's largely flat with some gentle slopes. There are a few mature trees on the site near the existing buildings. Um, as you can see, there are existing sidewalks along the edges of the site and from the property and the adjacent public right of way. There are some obstructed mountain views to the west and southwest, which are partially blocked by the large ware- warehouse building across Spine Road. In terms of transportation, there is a trans, there is a multi-use path called for in the Transportation Connections Plan, which is shown here in green. There's an existing on-street bike route on Spine Road just next to the site. And the nearest transit route is the two O five, which is about a thousand feet from the site. And provides service to downtown Boulder and Gun Barrel with stops along J Road and Twenty-Eighth. The BVCP land use designation is transitional business, which calls for less intensive business uses. Um, a transition to residential uses and can consist of a mix of uses, including housing. This property is within the Gun Barrel Community Center Plan. This plan was originally adopted in two thousand and four. It was created to address land use and transportation issues in this Gun Barrel Center area. Um, the land use concept provided for a higher intensity area in the retail core to be surrounded by other uses. The plan intends to create safe and convenient transportation connections between the center and surrounding areas. The Sunset Park property is within the office mixed-use area, which is also referred to as the Transitional Business District. It provides for a mix of uses and a visual transition between the higher intensity uses in the core and adjacent residential neighborhoods. When the plan was created, this area was characterized by a mix of small-scale office and personal service uses. And it was planned to include additional uses over time, including lodging and residential. The plan encouraged landscape buffers, detached sidewalks, parking lot screening and a quality pedestrian environment. The plan also provided guidance for Gun Park Drive and notes that the pedestrian environment should be enhanced. And that blocks and building masses should be no more than a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet long. Um, in terms of the zoning, the site is on Business Regional Two, which allows for a wide range of retail and commercial operations. Um, adjacent properties are also in the BR two zone as well as properties. In a mix of zones to the west, business transitional, industrial, and the property to the south being in unincorporated Boulder County. Um, attached residential uses are allowed in BR two, subject to specific use standards. Um, because the property is along a major street uh which is Spine Road. Um, because of this, if there are ground floor residential units along Spine Road. Um, if the entire lot or parcel is affordable uh dwelling units, then the use is permitted by right. If for some reason that did not happen, then a use review would be required. So moving to the specific project tonight, um, this would redevelop the overall three point seven four acre site with a hundred and forty-seven dwelling units. There would be two townhome buildings at the east end of the site. Five apartment buildings toward the central area and one community building at the north end of the site. Um, there is a proposed multi-use path connection, which you can see that coincides with the Transportation Connection Plan location. And the community building um would be within a central open space for the project. This proposal includes two vehicle access points toward the east end of the site. As well as an emergency access-only access point toward the west end. And vehicular circulation runs between the buildings, two garages and tuck-under parking. As well as two surface parking areas at the south end of the site. Internal pedestrian circulation would be provided largely in the central open space and along the multi-use path and. The zoning in this area calls for a minimum of forty percent of the site to be open space. And also for a minimum of sixty square feet of private open space for each dwelling unit, which is typically provided via balconies or decks or private patio. Um, parking here, as I mentioned, is provided in garages for the townhomes, tuck-under parking and surface parking. This proposal um includes about one point one seven spaces per dwelling unit. Because we don't know the final count of bedrooms and uh per unit. We don't know the exact amount of parking that will be required. Um, staff estimates that a parking reduction in the range of ten to twenty percent might be expected uh based on the amount of parking proposed. Um, moving to the architecture. The applicant provided these renderings. The residential buildings are primarily three stories in height, and the central community building would be one story. Um, the applicants indicated that this proposal may include a height modification request to allow for adequate ceiling heights. And some modifications to the roof form to provide variety. Um, if that were to happen, planning board would be the decision maker on the item if it includes a height modification request. And moving to required processes, so this would um, a site review would be required for the proposal. If a height modification request were included, again, it would be a planning board decision. Um, a use review may be required if the entire lot or parcel is not uh permanently affordable housing. Then it would move into technical documents and preliminary and final plots. So here were those key issues for discussion. The first one was if the proposal was generally compatible with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. Um, staff found the proposal consistent with the BVCP designation of transitional business. Um, it would provide for housing uses and allow for a transition between the higher intensity uh core area to the north. To the lower intensity residential uses to the south in unincorporated Boulder County. The proposal would provide for affordable housing in the Gun Barrel area, which is considered a major employment center. And the retail, or excuse me, the infill residential development, especially affordable housing near a major employment center. Um, helps to create more integrated neighborhoods in line with many BVCP policies, including those listed on this slide. For key issue number two, um, is the proposed concept plan generally compatible with the Gun Barrel Community Center Plan? Staff found the proposal to be compatible with the Community Center Plan, including the Transitional Business Land Use Designation within the plan. The proposal's in line with the intent of the plan to address the imbalance of jobs to housing in Gun Barrel. And is consistent with the concept of adding residents in close proximity to the retail core. And allowing for a transition between the core and lower intensity areas. The proposal also follows the Transportation Network Plan and would be close to existing transit connections and bike routes. And the third key issue was um feedback on the conceptual site plan and building design. Um, staff on the overall, the conceptual design included many features of a successful site design. Including the placement of the buildings surrounding the central open space and with parking areas placed toward the rear and under buildings. Um, staff would like to see at the time of a site review, a high-quality pedestrian realm provided internal to the site. Which is largely vehicle oriented right now. The proposal would require revisions to address transportation comments regarding the number of access points to the public right of way. And to meet emergency access uh requirements. The proposal would also need to ensure that adequate open spaces provided. A minimum of forty percent of the site is required as open space in this zoning district. And at the time of site review, it would be appropriate to identify the type of programming and amenities that'll be provided for the residents in the open spaces. Moving to building design, um, staff was supported of the conceptual materials and precedent imagery that was provided. Um, pitched roofs would be appropriate in this location or a mixture of pitched and flat roof forms. We'd like to see how the building designs can be updated to provide a quality interface specifically along Gun Park Drive. By providing a face to the buildings along that edge. In terms of next steps, uh, the proposal would be um up for a city council call-up consideration. Then the applicant would either proceed with submitting um a development application or potentially a second concept plan review if they so chose. Um, the application would require a site review, possibly a use review if necessary. Um, if a height modification is proposed, it would be a planning board decision. Or if for some reason the parking reduction was greater than fifty percent, also a planning board decision. That concludes the staff's presentation. Um, the applicant is also here with a presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions as well.
Thanks, Shannon. Um, any questions for Shannon or city staff? Claudia?
So thank you for that, Shannon. And especially for highlighting the uh multi-use path going through there. I somehow did not catch that. I did not catch my eye in the packet. Um, and that's what my question is actually about. So we see a little segment of a multi-use path. And I'm curious um what the planned connection is for that and if any existing connection does exist.
Yeah, my understanding is that stems from the the Community Center Plan. Um, part of the plan was intended to help create safe connections into that. Create safe connections into that retail core for folks. So there is a drawing that kind of depicts this path being created and potentially it continuing on into the county. Um, so I believe that was the intent of, of that planned connection there.
Okay. And are there any obvious connections or connection points to the apartments that are adjacent there? With the Meadow Creek Apartments?
Yeah, as you can see in this, in this image, if the. Trail were to be in approximately this, excuse me, this location. It would stop at the property line, obviously, and it would be up to the neighboring property owner if they so chose to. Then connect up with that in some way.
Okay. And Meadow Creek is unincorporated Boulder County, is that correct?
That's right. Yep.
Okay. And are there any special considerations in that kind of interthings on property lines? How, how we deal with? With connections made, missed, left for the future? Um, how does that work?
Yeah, that's a great question. We do see that a lot as one property is being redeveloped. There's not always that next connection point. Um, yet, I think the idea is that as properties come in and are redeveloped, that. Connections that make sense are implemented with the hope that future connections will then be connected up with. Um, if that's able to happen in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Mel.
Thank you. Um, hi there Shannon, thank you for your presentation. And, um, I totally appreciate your, your using evolved language by saying that the buildings are being removed rather than demolished. You know, we gotta, we gotta start rethinking how we speak about these things. So thank you for that. Um, I have two questions. Uh, one is if this is, um, I think it's considered a transition. Both land use and zoning. Uh, from high intensity commercial to, uh, residential. Do you know the scale of? The building, the commercial building that it's transitioning and the residential. Uh, buildings that it's transitioning to? Is there a shift in scale or how is it providing a transition?
Yeah, I think part of the transition would be the use. So it's providing, um. A higher intensity or higher density residential use. Um, adjacent to the commercial area that then filters down to lower intensity residential uses further down. Um, these buildings are proposed to be three story buildings. So that could be. An item for discussion is if there should be, um, some variation in the heights or forms of the buildings. Um, in certain areas of the site.
Is the Meadow Creek, um, two stories?
These are two stories, yes.
Um, okay, thank you for that. And, um, I looked on the plans and I couldn't find, you know, it talks about the. The intent of breaking up the super blocks and having a hundred and fifty to two hundred and feet, two hundred feet max. What are the lengths of the buildings that are being proposed?
I believe the longest building right along Spine Road, if I can find this plan, this building here is. Right at just under two hundred.
Okay. Okay, that, those are. Those are my questions. Thank you so much for having answers.
Go ahead Kurt.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions about access. First of all, uh, with this. The, the, the slide that you have up here. So there's this long U shaped access. Uh, that terminates on the left side, the west side. It, yeah, exactly there. So that is not a public. A, a, a public curb cut, right? It's just a fire access.
Yes, my understanding is the intent that this would serve as an emergency access point only.
Okay. And so somebody who's. Building is, or who's, whose unit or parking space, I guess, is up at the end of there would drive. All the way through that U to get out. Okay.
Yes.
Um, and then relatedly, so I know that there's a requirement of only one. Um, uh, curb cut, which could be modified. But is, would a curb cut on spine be allowable? If assuming it was still just two.
Um, potential.
I know there's, there's a requirement for taking access off the lowest category street.
Yeah, the lowest category is Gun Park Drive. Um, so that would be the preference. Um, again, we could look at, like you said, different configurations and possibilities, but yeah, Gun Park is the lowest category.
Okay, but that, that requirement in the DCS is something that could be varied.
I believe the number of access points per property, I believe it can be varied, but I can double check and try to see if that's correct.
Okay, but yeah, my, th- that's good to know. But my other question was about taking access off the lowest category street. Is that also something that can be varied?
I think. I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head. I could try to look at the code real quick and see.
Okay.
Think it can.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you'll need a traffic study to, you know, to demonstrate it. But yeah, I think that that's something that could be examined.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Mason. Yes, my question's kind of piggybacking off of all these questions that, that connection, um, over to Gun Park Drive, um. It looks like it, it kind of just drops off onto the street and you still have to walk like a good, maybe like four hundred feet or so to get to the nearest crosswalk. Um, is there any discussion around including additional access points to the shopping center across the street? Like, I mean, a crosswalk, for instance, could one be added there or is that beyond the scope for our discussion?
Um, like, uh, so like this, um, I'm sorry, you, you were speaking to the multi-use path and how you had been cross crossover.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, on a, in terms of a crosswalk specifically, I don't know. I think that would be, um. A good question to bring up in terms of the configuration of this multi-use path. I know that in the, um, Gun Barrel Community Center Plan, there is the possibility for, um. For network connection locations to be amended. Um, so the board could think about is, is this the best potential location for this path and what would be? Um, you know, any thoughts regarding, regarding how it is portrayed here?
Great, thanks. Cause to me, it seems like if I, if I was walking on that path and I got here, I would. Be tempted to either J walk or just walk down, which if I was gonna walk down, then. Not really sure how much use that has, especially connecting to the other units if that were to occur, the, the other complex behind it. Um, great. That's my, my question.
Cool. Anybody else? Other questions? Shannon?
I'm sorry, I remembered one more. Um, it didn't really speak to in the packet, the community building. Um. Has there been much discussion around the uses for that building? Like, we'll have a community kitchen or? Is that, uh, too detailed for the stage?
Yeah, I think the applicant could probably share, um. What they're kind of envisioning. Um, so I don't, I don't want to speak for them, but I'm sure they have kind of, like you mentioned, some ideas on what they want to put in there.
Alright. Um, speaking of the applicant, if we don't have any other questions, uh, it's a good time to segue to them. Thank you Shannon for the presentation.
Thank you.
You guys have, uh, up to fifteen minutes. If you could introduce yourself, then, uh, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Laura Scheinbaum. I am Chief Real Estate Officer for Boulder Housing Partners. I'm really happy to be here this evening with you all. Thanks for. Hearing us on this concept review for, uh, Sunset Park, uh, renamed. We didn't wanna. Um, well, go with a gun park. We weren't sure that that was the, the perfect name for a future affordable housing site. So Sunset Park it was. Um, so happy to be here. Um, this is, uh, property that we're under contract for at the moment. So we're trying to get a read from. Planning board to understand if we, um, are in the ballpark in terms of our, um, yields, um, our open space calculations, unit sizes. Just generally sort of how, um, you feel about this project and, and its location. We are excited for that feedback. Um, generally, I think you all know a little bit about Boulder Housing Partners, but we are the housing authority for the city of Boulder. Our mission is to provide quality affordable homes and, um, really foster thriving communities. So, um, to that end, we, um, develop. Uh, property manage and, um, maintain all of our own property. We have sixteen hundred units. Under management right now, um, and then we've got another hundred and sixty under construction and just closed on another seventy three. Um, the financing for another seventy three units. So we have quite a bit in our pipeline, a bunch of property also lined up. Um, so this is intended as probably a, a future project for us in the next couple of years. We wouldn't be pursuing entitlements. Um, super quickly. So this is really to get a read so that we can, um, move forward with a closing with some confidence that we are in the ballpark of what we're. Looking to do, um, with affordability there. Um, so just a couple of things, you know, we're super excited about this location in Gun Barrel. I think that. There is an imbalance of the jobs housing, um, ratio up there and, and we don't have any affordable housing as Boulder Housing Partners in. The community in Gun Barrel. So we believe that this would be a, a great, um, location to, you know, really represent our. Uh, community with some affordability, um, with, you know, capital A, capital H affordable. Uh, we, we always. Design and build and develop with intention. So, you know, we've not done a ton of outreach yet with the neighborhood. And we have talked to the neighbor to the south, but we would do a robust community engagement process, um, down the road when we go to fully entitle the site. Um, I can speak to that, um, connectivity. We did speak with the neighbor to the south that has the Boulder, I think it's Boulder Meadows. Um, site, um, and they would be interested in at least initially putting in a gate and providing some thorough fare to be able to access. A multi-use path that we would install to be able to get to the commercial sites to the north. So, um, they're looking very much forward to working with us as we design in the future. Um, we do, like I said, design with intent. Um, all of our sites now are all electric. Well, not. Not all the entire portfolio, but anything we develop now, um, is designed to be all electric. Um, we have really good community services. The community center would have, you know, staff offices, uh, open. Space for people to, you know, have meetings and things like that. Um, and, you know, we would program as we see exactly who is going to be living at the site, but. Um, generally, it, we try and get a community center at all of our sites to provide for that. Um, you know, space making and, and places for people to, to meet and, and be together. Um, so I think. That's about it. I mean, again, we're looking to get some feedback from you all. This is, um, you know. Into the future, but we're excited to get some, um. Yeah, just some, some good insights into what, um, if we're on the right path. I will now hand off to Pete Weber with, uh, Coburn, and he will walk you through the details of the property. And we look forward to your questions and comments. Thank you.
Hey everyone, Pete Weber with Coburn. Um, I'm not yet able to share my screen. Can somebody allow that? I've got a few things to show you. There we go. Thank you. Alright, are you able to see that now? Okay, so the first, um, couple of slides here were for Laura. Um, she breezed through that. So I want to start with, um, a little more information about the context and the site. Um, we think this is a great spot to put a bunch of people, um, immediately adjacent to the Gun Barrel Center. Um, most notably having the grocery store, uh, right there. Um, basically just, just directly to the north. Um, it is a transitional zone as, uh, Shannon did a good job pointing out between that commercial core and the residential. To the south, um, and white industrial to the west. So that, that use combination alone, we think is, is super strong. In addition to that, um, it is actually quite well connected. The two oh five. Runs from Gun Barrel to downtown Boulder, uh, past Twenty Ninth Street Mall, down Twenty Eighth Street. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a great route actually, um. And does a good job of connecting Gun Barrel to the center of town. In addition to that, um, you can see a bunch of different, um, bike paths and multi-use paths. That, um, that are around the site, including the one that, that, um, we've already talked a little bit about that, um, is suggested to run through the site. Uh, so this is our site plan. Um, Shannon pointed out a little bit. I'll maybe go into a little bit more detail. We've really designed this, um. Centered around a central green space, um, with, uh, a number of buildings opening up onto that green space. There are, uh, five apartment buildings, that one community building, and then two townhomes over on the east side. Shannon did point out that multi-use path connection that runs here, and I wanted to talk about. Some of your questions maybe want to talk about the access points. Um, one of the reasons that, that we did the access the way that we did with. A separate townhome access from the, from the apartments is so that we're not having a drive across that multi-use path connection. So we have no conflict with vehicular traffic. Um, the connection that Laura pointed out in the conversations with the neighbors would happen right here. And we've aligned this so that it could connect up fairly easily to the sidewalk in the neighborhood to the south. Um. Kurt's comment about potentially connecting to Spine Road here, I think would be really interesting to explore if we could get support. Um, through our traffic analysis and staff. Um, the long drive here is a little bit, seemed a little unnecessary, um, except for city code. Um. And we've, I also want to point out that the way we've oriented these buildings, we have the, our largest building facing Spine Road. So that would be a front. We would treat these, um, buildings, their ends as fronts as they front along Gun Park Drive. And then the townhomes face to the east and to the west. And this building E here forms a courtyard, which I'll tell you a little bit more about in a minute. This is, gives you a little bit of a three D view. I think ML asked for a sense of scale in, in terms of what's around us. Um, we are proposing three stories, uh, for all the buildings on the site. The buildings at the Gun Barrel Center are largely single story. Um, they're a fairly tall single story, but they are single story with the pitched roof. The apartment buildings that are to the south are two story, again with a pitched roof. And then these light industrial buildings, I'm just betting these are pretty darn close to thirty five feet tall. Um, in one or two stories. So this gives you an idea of kind of how we relate to the neighbors around us. Um. The, and you can see how the buildings are. Gathered around that green space with that smaller community building, um, in the middle. That building, of course, would also then sort of be a front to the project as it faces Gun Park Drive. And then this one, just looking at the same model from a little bit different angle. Um, you can see a little bit here how the parking is working and I'll get into that later, but there's this combination of. Surface parking along the back and then tuck under parking for the remainder of the apartments with the townhomes being parked. Um, a little bit at the surface for guest parking and then individual garages, uh, in between. I won't go into a lot of detail here, but just point out a couple of things. We haven't yet figured out our unit mix and exactly how we're gonna do this. We're anywhere from eight hundred to eight hundred fifty square foot average for. The apartment sizes, and that's based on work we've been doing with BHP and kind of where they think their sweet spot is in terms of the mix of one twos and three bedrooms. Um, the townhome component, um, our townhomes are twelve thirty, twelve forty square feet. So they're fairly small, especially compared to the project that you just saw earlier. And then that commercial. Community building is about thirty two hundred square feet. And it might be good to take a moment and talk about potential uses for that. Um, I think that the. Best answer we can give right now, we just don't know yet. Um, we want it to be something for the community, for the folks that live here. Um, and I think the question that we haven't yet answered amongst ourselves is whether or not it has an outward reaching component as well. Um, or is it really just for the residents? So we're gonna, we'll be working on that, um, before we, um, before we make any presentation. Um, so the overall, um, mix here is a hundred forty seven total units. Hundred twenty four of them are apartments, twenty three of them are townhomes. Um, I think Shannon did point out our parking ratio is we have a hundred seventy two parking spaces. That's one point one seven per unit. I suspect that. I suspect that if we do not have updated parking rules yet, that we would be asking for a relatively modest parking reduction. But I do think we would ask for a parking reduction. I think it's warranted, given our proximity to Gun Barrel Center and the access to public transportation and alt modes. This slide just gives you an idea, a better idea of how that parking is organized. We really tried as best we could to kind of hide that parking, to keep it at the perimeter and leave as much green open space as we can in the center of the project. You see the combination of the, the surface really is this piece at the back of the townhomes and then these spaces along the south edge, the remainder of it is all tuck-under. And then architecture. We are thinking of something that has that pitched roof component. This might get into the height discussion, and we'd like to hear your thoughts on that. We may, we think we'd like to get some more movement and not just have flat roofs in our three-story component, which could put us into a position of asking for some additional height beyond the thirty-five feet. It also allows for a little taller ceiling height, which we think could be appropriate. We're looking at something that has a little bit of a more contemporary look, but does kind of keep some of that, that pitched roof. And then a couple of views. This is a shot looking down that multi-use path that would connect us, connect us and our neighbors up to Gun Barrel Center. The townhome building is on the left and in the apartment, one of the apartment buildings is on the right. So a little shared green space between those two buildings. And you can see how we're kind of playing around with, might modulate those roof forms. And then this is a shot of that green space with the, one of the apartment buildings in the background and the community building kind of in the foreground, that single-story structure. We'd love to have an outdoor component to that, that that protects us from the sun and makes that a little more usable in more seasons. So that's what's depicted there in the foreground where that red balloon is. So I think that's it. We'd love to answer any questions you have.
Awesome. Thank you, Peter and Laura. Questions, Mark?
Thanks. I jumped in to go first because I am going to have to drop off here shortly due to battery life and a flight. So, and for the applicant, sometimes it feels like we're the parking board rather than the planning board, but my questions are centered around parking. Has BHP ever implemented some parking principles, unbundling, separating, unbundling, and requiring payment for parking at any of their projects?
Yeah, thanks, Mark. That's a, it's a good question. And yes, we've done a moderated, modulated Sump application. The shared unbundled and managed piece of Sump are all very easy for us to accomplish. We support all of those in pretty much any property that we own and manage. The paid component is a little more complicated, given tax credit rules and the IRS. When we get money from the federal government to build these projects through the tax credit program, the paid piece for parking is not allowable. So we, if parking is an amenity that is at the site, we are not allowed to charge for it. It has to be included in the rent of the unit. We've tried a number of different ways to try and work around that, such as, you know, reducing rents for people who don't bring a car to the site and things like that. And to date, we've not had luck with that being okay with our tax credit investors and their counsel. So, so yes, we support Sump. We love it. We do it as much as we can. But when we have these millions of dollars that come in to really fill the gap in our project cost and project financing, to date, we've not been able to figure out a way to have them be separately paid for stalls that would be sort of independent of the units.
Okay, great. That's an interesting answer. And maybe frustrating for everyone, but interesting. Does BHP ever provide, whether it's paid, unpaid, as an amenity, truck slash trailer parking for contractors, people who make their living doing landscaping work, that sort of thing, in any of your units? Or are they expected to, if they're in that, in those businesses, to have a yard space somewhere else? Or anyway, have you ever encountered requests for that, or have you ever dealt with that?
Good question. So we generally have a mix of compact and regular-sized stalls. So we don't set aside truck stalls or trailer stalls or anything like that for the use that you just described. It's an interesting concept, but again, generally, we're asking for parking reductions. And so that type of use would happen either off-site or if there is, you know, an excess of spaces, which we actually do have occasionally at our sites. Then I have seen those types of trailers for folks that are working in those types of trades at our properties. But we don't set aside or have to date set aside that the parking stall for that use.
Okay. Okay, and since I'm going to drop off, I'm just going to ask for a little indulgence. I'm just going to comment on the, on the roof. I, I, I think that in this area, pitched roof sort of design and answer to Pete's question would be something I think would be preferable. So I'm going to end it there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Are you, are you dropping off? Are you sticking around or?
I'm, I'm going to stick around for another ten minutes or so.
Okay, all right. Thanks. Any other questions for the applicant before we go to the public hearing? Anna?
Thank you. I just have one question. I'm not sure if this would be to Laura or to Pete, but the public input, there seem to be a recurring concern about water issues. Is there a issue with precipitation and how it drains or doesn't drain on this property?
We haven't gotten there yet, ML. We will have to provide both detention and water quality across the site. And we haven't yet designed that system at concept level. We know what the issues are, and we will need both detention and water quality and the site design will have to accommodate that.
Okay, so the concerns are are well-founded and it's just coming in the future.
Solution? No different than any other site. Yes, we have to accommodate.
Yeah, for some reason, it was sounding like it was an extraordinary amount of, of concern. And I'm like, well, so it's not, I'm hearing you say it's not out of the ordinary.
No, and Shannon might have some input on that as well, but I, we don't know of anything out of the ordinary on this site.
Okay, I appreciate your answer. Thank you so much.
Go ahead, Kurt.
Thanks. Two hopefully quick questions. Did you happen to count the number of on-street parking spaces in front, both on Spine and Gun Park?
No, short answer. I, I, I think we looked at this some months ago and maybe in the neighborhood of thirty, depending on the curb cut configuration.
Okay, that's good enough. Great. And the other question is about the, this community building in particular. So all of the buildings you show oriented with the cardinal directions, even though Gun Park curves, did you give any consideration to angling, especially this community building and/or reducing the setback to increase that amount of internal open space?
Yeah, Kurt, especially following the comments. I watched the previous presentation and the, the thoughts about open space. And I was staring at our site plan while that was going on. So yes, I think that something we should definitely consider is trying to maximize this internal space and angling that building, pushing it actually further to the street, maybe getting a little more setback variance in order to accommodate that, I think could be appropriate.
Great. Thank you.
Kurt, you're still, there it goes. Claudia?
Thank you. And thank you, Kurt, for that question about the orientation of the community building. I was going to bring that up in comments. I think that's a fabulous thing to be looking at. My question actually had to do with orientation of the other buildings and in particular, like what is considered the front. I heard you mention with the townhouses that those would have both east and west sides, so two fronts on those buildings. For the apartment buildings, what does access look like for those? Are those interior corridors? Are they walk-ups? Have you gotten that far yet?
We haven't. I, the buildings that we, as we kind of put those things, those together, it did feel like a walk-up condition with multiple stairwells might be the most efficient way to do that. And that might warrant this kind of thing. If you, if you look at the building, the apartment building, you can see here, this stairwell that is in the center of that building, that kind of thing would be a central stair that would then serve probably four units on each floor and then be able to connect back to the parking as well. That's kind of what's in our head. We, again, we haven't figured all that out yet. But right now, that's, I think that's going to be more efficient way to handle it rather than the centrally loaded corridor.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And I know it's early, but it's also extremely helpful to start to evaluate like how buildings interact with each other and how these interior spaces function. Thanks so much.
Any other questions or clarifications? None for me either. So we appreciate that. I, I think we're going to go to the public hearing component of this. If you guys wouldn't mind turning off your cameras. Thank you. And Vivian, I'll hand it over to you.
Great. So we already have a couple of hands raised. Each member of the public who wishes to speak will have three minutes to speak on this item. We'll start with Julie Die, followed by Irene Hilson. Please go ahead and the timer, you should be able to see the timer.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, you already heard me tonight, but I'm Julie Die. I live in Gun Barrel in the city of Boulder. And as a reminder, I'm on the board of the Gun Barrel Community Alliance. Despite exhaustion, I stayed on the call to make a very impromptu speech. I'm in support of this development, particularly in light of its proximity to amenities and to the Gun Barrel Center with affordable housing. I would just comment and ask a few things. First, take a look at the bus and shuttle options. While this location makes sense, it does not address the need to drive to amenities outside of the grocery store and a few restaurants. You mentioned the shuttle for Celestial Seasonings location. And I just want to note that the planned shuttle, as Pete Weber knows, is a Gun Barrel-only shuttle from Celestial over to Sixty-Third and King Supers and not to other parts of Boulder. The two oh five is a great option, as mentioned, but it ends at nine P M, even on the weekends. Again, Heatherwood is on the chopping block. And so if you add a thousand people at Celestial and the other site proposed tonight and several hundred in the hundred and twenty-four apartments here, you know, where will the kids go? Families will have to drive far to and from just to be part of a school community. Our oldest went to Crestview Elementary. And just to help people understand, from Orchard Creek, it's a one hour and thirty-five minute walk to the elementary school, about a twelve to fifteen minute drive. And from this proposed location, it's a two-hour and nine-minute walk to Crestview. I will add again that we have no public playground on this side of the diagonal. And when I look at all of these developments dropped into Gun Barrel without any effort to add community amenities, it's so frustrating to me. It's a forty-five minute walk from this Sunset site to Tom Watson Park. We raised our children in Gun Barrel, and I, I, I know you know, and I want to be clear that our children have no place to go and recreate other than to get in the car and be driven into the city just to play. Lastly, I'm going to add that as the affordable part of Boulder, our rental prices here in Gun Barrel are often cheaper than the affordable housing in the BHP housing program. You can compare, I guess it's MISA at the crossing versus rental availability here. So just please take a look at that and compare as you build and offer this housing to the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Julie.
Hey, Vivian, sorry to interrupt you. I just want to just insert that language that we did in the last public hearing.
Yeah, go for it.
That the board requests that prior to offering public comments that all members of the public disclose any financial or business relationship or other membership or affiliation related to the applicant, project, or neighbor specifically, including any paid compensation. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Irene Hilson? A reminder at star six to unmute by phone.
Okay, my name is Irene. I have no financial disclosure. Items I'd respectfully request to be addressed are as follows. When the Good Neighbor meeting on March twentieth was held, planning noted that no neighbors attended. The residents of Gun Barrel were not notified of the BHP redevelopment proposal. Letters only were sent to very few property owners within six hundred feet. Residents only learned of this proposal once the legal notification was published. I think that's why we have so few people on the call. That being said, it appears that the BHP R D project is based on a two thousand and two market study. I'd like to know if there was any update to that market study that took into consideration the five hundred and fifty apartments that had been built here after that study. Boulder View has sixty-eight, Gun Barrel Center two hundred and fifty-one, and Apex Fifty-Five Ten has two hundred and thirty-one. Were the vacancy rates of these previously mentioned build-outs considered? Many of the buildings built for the Gun Barrel Center remain empty. Were any current traffic studies done? Will any police response times be studied and addressed? That still is remains an issue for Boulder, for Gun Barrel. The three-story height will block prominent views of existing neighborhood buildings. Has this been considered? Will any playgrounds or dog parks be included in this development? Many of the HOA parks welcome and have neighboring residents come to our parks and were impacted by the growth of the five hundred and fifty apartments previously, previously mentioned. And the residents of the HOAs are incurring costs of the usage impacts. With the fear that the developers in Boulder planning are bent on building in Gun Barrel no matter what, may I mention the tennis court debacle, I'm forcing myself as a resident of Gun Barrel to consider any compromise that would respect the resident's desire to maintain feasibility of living here. With the limited low-income housing for the elderly, can these apartments and hundred and twenty-four apartments and twenty-three townhomes be designated for low-income seniors? Location would be ideal for seniors. It's quiet here. They're not going to deal with students. There's a place to shop. There's coffee places. There's dinner places. Caretakers could move into the vacancies that the aforementioned buildings have cultivated in Gun Barrel, and they provide volunteer services to the elderly. Have the developers of this or Longbow negotiated a cash-in-lie agreement to meet affordability requirements? I guess that's my almost three minutes, so I would say thank you for listening. I can talk really fast because I'm from Boston. So hopefully you caught most of that. If not, I am happy to repeat it. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. Just remind people, members from the public, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand so we know to call on you. Okay, we have one more hand raised. Lynn Siegel, please go ahead.
First of all, the pre-existing buildings on this site, I'm, I'm going to use the D word, demolition, not removal. I say reuse, not recycle. And I think that in Boulder, we need to determine the full lifecycle analysis, the embodied energy of everything that is going to be potentially torn down for demolition. And first have it evaluated for adaptive reuse. And this site, the other site, if it's industrial and this site's going to be housing, then the other site needs to be industrial. Well, this goes to the issue of a sub-community plan for all of Gun Barrel, a master plan for all of Gun Barrel, to determine just what needs to be where. And absent of having a jobs housing balance that is quantitatively made, you know, specifically made with population in mind, I don't think that there should be any of these low-housing. I don't think that there should be any of these um low-housing um. Uh, Lytech funds used at all. They're a bribe. They're a bribe from the federal government to grow population. Population that doesn't pay and that drives up housing costs. And that drives up homelessness, and that's why we've got ourselves in this pickle in the United States where where everything's overpriced. So, housing causes more the demand for more housing. It doesn't solve anything. And population needs to be managed. So, when and when you're talking about Boulder Valley Comp Plan, it's very lofty kind of things. That there need to be specifics in the B V C P that you're agreeing to, and it's not just the numbers and the vagueness. In all of the um parameters with the various parts of the B V C P. Needs to be very specific and and very. Quantified. And um, this this space, we need industrial spaces. And they need to be kept industrial. And that needs to be determined in a in a thoughtful, comprehensive urban plan. And not just thrown together with more housing solves the problem. It doesn't. It creates the demand for more housing. And unaffordability and a lot of vacancies too.
Thank you, Lynn. I don't see any other hands raised, so that concludes the public hearing for this item.
Great. Thank you, Vivian, and thank you for the members of the public uh that spoke. Um, I suggest as a board that um. We go straight into our comments unless um people feel otherwise that we need a break. Um. Anybody? Everybody good? Okay, great. Um, would you mind um? Uh, putting up uh the key considerations? I think that was. Thank you. That's great. Um, and we'll do it the same way um we did before. I thought that worked pretty well. Um. If uh if uh we could go one by one and talk to these uh four items, that would be great. Um, anyone wants to speak first? Go ahead, Mason.
Yeah, so um, I do believe this is uh generally compatible with the goals, objectives, and recommendations of the V V. B B C P. Um, I also found that it was generally compatible with the Gun Barrel Community Center Plan. Um, as for the concept, uh conceptual site plan and uh building design. I think there were good comments around exploring um that multi-use path, make sure that has the best connections possible, the. The road connections uh on the um west side and central reorientation of some of the buildings. Um, were all all great comments to be considered. Um, as far as other key issues identified, I agree with M L that there seem to be um a lot of focus on drainage. Um, in the comments um for the neighbors. I know that some some of the neighbors had issues. Um. And we're doing some remediation. They were specifically concerned about this this building on the site, so I'll look forward to hear more about this that in the site review.
Great. Uh, Kurt?
Thank you. Well, first of all, it's really great to have a a plan that we can really be excited, that I at least can really be excited about. After the previous one, which was sort of more grudging semi-acceptance, so. Uh, I'm 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 excited about this. Uh, I think it is consistent with the B V C P. And the Gun Barrel Community Center Plan. My main concern is about the site design. Um, and sort of the awkwardness of the accesses. I think it would be great if there were a way, and I realize that there are various constraints. Um, but it would be great if the western portion of it, west of the multi-use path, could be designed. To be a little more grid-based, well, a little more permeable. Um, and um, yeah, without without that big U. I would note that on one of the staff slides, there was a very clear um um. Desire line across this property from the southwest corner of the parcel up to the King Supers Shopping Center. And so if there were any way to, again, make it the the site more permeable, the design more permeable. More of a grid and allow for that kind of movement. Through the site, I think that that would be really great. I understand that there are concerns about having too many people go through the site, but but that would be ideal. Uh, but overall, I'm excited about it. I think it'll be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Uh, go ahead, M L. Oh, you're on mute.
Cheeky little microphone, didn't wanna, didn't wanna come active. Okay, well, thank you so much um for the presentation, and. I'm in uh what what agreement? A hundred percent affordable. We don't get this this privilege very often, so hopefully it stays that way as it goes through its process. I know you said you got a long timeframe, so. Um, good luck with with the timing and hopefully it won't um change that. My biggest comment would be so, uh, I think it meets the Boulder Valley Comp Plan goals, objectives, and recommendations. I also feel that it is um compatible with the Gun Barrel Community Center Plan. My comments have to do, I would support Kurt's um. Uh, suggestion about looking at the circulation and how that works both onsite and onto the site. It seemed like, um, although there was a lot of um attention to making sure that there was plenty of green space around the buildings and between the buildings. Um, it seemed like there might be a mighty lot of um of car and pavement. Uh, I don't know how you might reduce that, but I think a revisited that would be would be useful. Um, the one point that I would make is that I. Thank you for bringing that little massing site and context drawing to the table. Because the what what did it show? It showed that the commercial was a tall one-story. And the uh residential were two stories. So you're proposing a third three-story buildings, and then you're thinking you wanna go even higher. I would suggest that you don't go for a height um increase. And um, especially, you know, I I don't think that it would be. The taking the role of being a transition project like it's supposed to be if it is taller than everything around it. Um, so I think that's a point that you might wanna take a look at, and I would also suggest that. If you do within the allowed height, choose to go with um some sloped roofs. Um, make them useful, so make sure that the roofs are actually gonna accommodate some um photovoltaics, not just about creating lofty interiors, but can they. Be intelligent and um create opportunities for smart photovoltaics on buildings. I know people put photovoltaics even on the north side of buildings these days. But um if you're going to use the roofs to accommodate um some functionality, I would suggest uh putting that toward onsite renewables. Um, so those are all my questions, and thank you so much.
Thanks, M L.
I mean, my comments, all my questions.
Go ahead, Claudia.
All right, so I will start with the first two questions about compatibility with plans. Um, and I'm gonna answer them both in the same breath. I think I I think this is a great place to do. Um, housing according to our B V C P principles. Um, particularly around compact development, around affordable housing. Um, but I am most excited um about how this location for housing can really support. Um, what we have as a neighborhood center there in Gun Barrel. Um, and also, uh, that's part of the Gun Barrel win as well. So getting some housing directly adjacent to that retail, I think, really strengthens that core. Um, beyond that, I have a few comments on the conceptual site plan. Um, let me see here. I was trying to put these in order here as other folks were speaking. Um. The first build on some comments that Kurt was making earlier and questions that he had about uh getting access, that second access point on spine as opposed to on Gun Park. Um, if that is a possibility, I think that gives some interesting opportunities to reduce the amount of pavement there in the site. To make it better for pedestrian circulation internally. Um, and I really. I really like, despite it not having connections, I think that's a an issue, but I like the concept of that multi-use path going through between two of your buildings. Um, I think that those kinds of internal corridors where cars are not welcome, but people are. Um, can be really good for building community and getting folks out and activating space. So, you know, I looked at some of the other long alleyways that you have in the current design. Um, and if there's any way to create more of those people spaces between buildings rather than car circulation spaces, I think that would improve the design. Um. Beyond that, um, I would think it's important to think about pathways through this site, and I think several of us have mentioned that as well. We have this multi-use path to nowhere. At the moment, and Kurt, I think I also really zeroed in on that path of desire that we can see. On the aerial photograph. Um, clearly, people in the Meadow Creek Development just to the south are looking for. Convenient walkways and passage through to the shopping center. Um, and I think if we're looking at how this fits into how this plan fits into the surroundings. Um, the paying attention to that kind of movement to the extent possible. Um, is something that we want to encourage. So to the extent that you are able to work with adjacent property owners to facilitate that kind of passage across, I think that would be helpful. Um, and then I also shared Kurt's comment earlier about pulling that community building back. Um, really to have it match more the curve of the street. Um, I think both to create a stronger front on this kind of development. Um, as it faces the the street and also to open up some more of that space on the inside. And then just one more thing that just struck me from coming from the public comments. Um, this issue about um kids and families in the Gun Barrel area, and I am aware of the situation at the Heatherwood School. Um, and just something to look at as as this is being planned. Um, you know, what is the intent for uh the mix of family types living in these units? Um, and I think it could be a very good thing to bring in affordable housing for. Families in particular with kids in this area, that is a possibility for this kind of site. These are investments in this Gun Barrel community that can actually help keep some of those public services in the area. So I'm as I'm as interested in the possibilities for strengthening the community and the demand for those services as I am. Worried about something not being there when families eventually arrive. If that makes sense. I'm finished.
Great. Laura.
Um, again, I'm gonna echo the great comments of my colleagues. Um, in particular, of thinking about the open space and how to make it more usable, especially for families, for kids, for play spaces. I think that will be really important. Um, the comments around, oh, oh, sorry, pardon me. The first two questions I'm gonna answer with a yes in terms of generally compatible with the B V C P. And the Gun Barrel Community Center Plan. So getting on to feedback on the conceptual site and plan and building design. So the open space amenities, the um circulation and connections. Excuse me, are an interesting challenge, and I think I read in the packet that. Staff are have already pointed out that little hammerhead, which I think is between the townhouse buildings as being something that would need to change. So I I don't know exactly how you change the circulation, um, but. And and maybe it's sacrilege to even suggest that it might uh cross that multi-use path, but. Somehow you're gonna have to um improve that circulation design so that you have the appropriate number of um curb cuts. And get people to and from where they need to go. I do like Kurt's idea of. Trying to connect on spine road if possible. Um, height, you know, I consistently, I am okay with being one story taller than uh things that are around you. Um, I I understand the concern around this needing to be a transition um or intended to be a transitional use between the commercial center and the residential. But I do think that having a little extra height for sloped roofs is appropriate. That's something that we've decided in the past. That we want to encourage and allow a little extra height for that. Um, and I do think that having the three stories is important to ensure the affordability component for this one hundred percent affordable development. So I'm I'm not super concerned about the height if this comes back to us for site review. Um, and and I know Shannon had sort of very subtly suggested that maybe there could be something done with variations in the height. Um, if if transition is a um a concern. So I would be open to some transitions at the edges, but I don't think we need to take the whole site down by a floor, certainly. Um. And I I think that's about it. I I do think that uh it is to be commended that this will be a one hundred percent affordable development. And uh this is not a concept on this or not a comment on this particular site development. But the lack of parks in Gun Barrel is quite concerning, and so I I would ask staff. Um, if they have any information for us about Parks and Rec's plans for Parks and Gun Barrel. Uh, if there are parks planned, I think that would be really good for us to know when we're doing these um concept reviews and site reviews in Gun Barrel. To know the greater context and and what might be planned for the future. So I will stop there. Thank you.
Cool. Thanks, Laura. Um, I I agree uh almost completely with my with my colleagues. Uh, one and two, I mean, yes, uh, feedback on the conceptual site plan. Uh, as as I think Kurt started and my colleagues uh continued. Um, to the extent that we can remove asphalt from the from the site. And uh and and open that to green space, especially given Laura's comments around um. You know, the lack of and what we heard from the community, the lack of park space, the lack of gathering space. Um, unfortunately or unfortunately, it creates an opportunity to um. To 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 build some of that in directly into a development like this to make sure that the people that are living here have those kinds of amenities. Um. As far as um, as heights go, you know. I'm okay with 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 functionality of 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 height articulation. Um, so um. If there's a functional reason why, um, you know, or at least a functional component to it, I I think it makes it easier to accept. I would also. You know, if we were looking at some height modification for some for some um. For some uh petrues, I would suggest that, you know, trimming trimming the edges of the buildings um. Uh, to uh to 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 mitigate some of that uh would be helpful. Um, but ou- outside of that, I I I don't really have um many other concerns um that haven't already been voiced. Um, so those are all my comments. Uh, Kurt has a bonus comment.
Bonus comment, I just forgot to mention about the height. I would also be comfortable with the height modification, especially in the interest of a variation in reforms. Thanks.
Oh, and my my one bonus comment too is um. Uh, I I I think pulling that building, as many of my colleagues said, to the to the the community space building to the street. Um, maybe even moving some of that community building, community space into one of those other, um, uh, you know. Taking a few units uh and tucking that space inside one of those larger buildings to even open up more green area might be another idea. Um, but again, uh, I know you're early in the concept of plan, so I'll leave it at that. Uh, anybody else with bonus comments? No, and it looks like Pete, uh, you have your hand up to um respond or get some clarifications.
Yeah, I just have um really one question around um that multi-use path connection. And if I could share my screen, I'd like to point point something out and just get your quick feedback on. It really has to do with the alignment of. The neighborhood to our south and and the Gun Barrel Center to the north. Um, so I'm just gonna share this real quick, and I'll be quick about this. Um, and I'm gonna move, do this. Okay, so this is a Google Earth view of what's going on out there. So our projects down here are the south. Um, and this is the and this is the Gun Barrel Center. King Supers is the white building in the middle at the top of the screen. I think that is by far the, I live in the neighborhood, so I I traverse. I live in the neighborhood, so I, I traverse this quite a lot. Um, I think it's by far the most desired place for folks to walk to, in particular our neighbors to the south. The front door is right here. Um, and this is a natural path of movement, including what was pointed out about the desire line across our property. Where the multi-use path connection is shown is over here. This is the back of all of this stuff, including the loading docks of the King Supers, the back of these buildings. There's no doors over here to any of that. There is the, these buildings do kind of front this water quality treatment thing here, but, but for the most part, this is the front and this is the center of the, the Gun Barrel commercial core. So to me, if we were trying to connect the neighbors to the south to the core, we should think about doing it here, um, where pedestrians already move and where they want to go. Not here where it's the back of house. And there, but, and there's no sidewalk, by the way, that, that moves through here. There is at least a little bit of a sidewalk here, um, and then you have to deal with the parking lot. But clearly people are moving that direction. So I'd just love to get your input on that and see, i- it may take a, a modification to, um, to the connections plan. But it seems like it might be more appropriate. I'd love to get your input.
So, so I, I don't want to do a whole other round of input from the board, um, because I think, I think we've already passed that section. But I, 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 at least, I, I think you put it, you put it, y- you guys know the site better than we do. Um, and if you think it's important to explore that, I would encourage you as you, as you're pretty early on in the concept plan to explore those types of things, right? That, that adequate feedback from us, yeah.
That's adequate. Thank you very much.
Yeah. All right, um, any, anything else? Otherwise, we're gonna, um, oh, Laura?
Sorry, I, I really quick. I know it's late. I just wanted to say, um, we heard you or I heard you on some of the family comments. Also the amenities on the site too. It's a lot of units. And I think as we develop the site more, um, with more detailed design work and community input, there would be, um, a focus on a variety of housing types. I've heard senior housing, family housing. But given the breadth of site, I think that we would probably be able to accommodate quite a bit of all of those things, actually. So that's sort of exciting. And then to that end, we would amenitize the site to, um, an end that would allow for the things that those different, um, folks that would be living there would, would be interested in, in utilizing. So playgrounds and community areas to gather and things of that nature. So, um, again, as, as has been mentioned, this is, we're early on, but, um, those are all things that we will definitely dig into as we move forward.
Thank you. All right, um, that concludes our public hearing, um, for that concept plan review. Uh, we'll go into matters. Nothing from staff tonight. Right? Uh, anything else that? No. Laura?
Um, I, I've brought this up a couple of times now, that HAB is having their retreat. I think it's next week. And if they could get their planning board liaison appointed, then that person could be part of the retreat, which I think is a really, it's just such a, a, a choice opportunity for the, um, the liaison to bond with the HAB board and understand what they're all about and be part of that early conversation. So I was wondering, I know that we don't have our full list of boards and we can't do all of our liaison appointments tonight. But if, if it's appropriate, if folks would like to select a HAB liaison tonight, then that person could, um, be part of that retreat next week. I don't know how folks feel about that.
I, I think we should appoint people all at once. I don't, I don't think we should selectively appoint people. So, um, if we want to go through the process, if that's, that's critical to us tonight, I suggest we do it. If not, I suggest we go to the next meeting would be my feeling. Oh, sorry, I muted. Sorry, Kurt.
Uh, no problem. I agree that it makes most sense to do them all at once. And given that Mark has left, I think that we can't really do it tonight. But, but I do appreciate what Laura said. It would be ideal if the HAB person could go to the retreat, but I think we're gonna have to sacrifice that.
Anybody else?
Well, I can at least tell Michael Lachey say that I tried. Thanks, everybody.
Um, any other matters anyone wants to bring up? I, I do think, um, that we should, if we don't already have that on our agenda, I haven't seen the agenda for the next meeting, but that's probably something we should make sure that we do in the next meeting. So we can, we can certainly try to insert that for the next meeting. Uh, anything else? Meeting debrief and calendar check. What is our next meeting? Uh, I think we're in person next meeting too. Laura, you're, you're, uh, you're muted.
Sorry, double muted. I think next week was listed on the calendar as a potential meeting and it has not yet been confirmed one way or the other if we're gonna have it. But there are no agenda items for next week and next week is also Passover. So I don't know if staff can confirm one way or the other if we have a meeting next week or not.
Sounds like we should pass that one over.
We do not have a meeting next week. Our next meeting will be on the seventh of May. And we'll be back in chambers for that. Um, I think council is back in chambers. For their meeting of the eighteenth this week. So I guess they'll do a little bit of a trial run by the time we get in there on May seventh. Uh, hopefully it should be fine tuned.
Great. Anything else before we adjourn? Well, thanks, everybody. I thought that was pretty efficient, given we had two public hearings and, um, were able to give, I think, the applicant some really good comments tonight. So thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Good leadership, George.
Yeah, I have to say, um, that was like four hours of public hearing, like to a T. I think we started at six eighteen, so well done.
Yeah, well done to everybody.
Like to think I did my part by keeping it short.
Have a good night, everybody.
All right, thanks.